Okay, let's everybody rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
This conference will now be recorded.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing I'd like to do is just wish everybody a very happy and healthy new year, and let's stay happy and healthy throughout the rest of the year. Thank you. First item is do roll call. Thomas Warren here, Mr. Young. Mr. Young is here. Mr. Mandel.
Present.
Mr. Mandel is here. Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney is here. Mr. Dell.
Here.
Mr. Dell is here. Mr. Andrews.
Here.
Mr. Andrews is here. Mr. McCory.
Here.
Mr. McCory is here. Mr. Bond.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Bond is here. Okay, Mr. Bond, we have a full board, so you won't be voting on anything tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay.
First order on the agenda is the San Sun subdivision plan, PB 20-56.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I don't hear now.
Could you make your mic a little louder?
Mr. Chairman, I see a lot of microphones that are not muted. People who have called in, please mute your phone.
There's still a few microphones that are on. Please mute your microphone because we cannot hear.
Okay.
One more. All right, I don't know who BB is. I know Mr. Bond is already on another site, so it's not him. So I don't know who that is. Let's try it again. If the applicant can turn up his volume a little bit so we all can hear.
Sure. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town council staff. My name is Lino Shoretta, partner with the firm Blakely Platt and Schmidt. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Stephen Griffin, regarding the subdivision application. I know you had a meeting already last couple of weeks ago on this project, so I'll just give a quick overview because I know we have a lot of folks here tonight on this project for the public. But just a brief background, this is a zoning compliant four lot subdivision on the corner of Herring and King's Highway. And before I go into the application with me this evening, I have the applicant, Stephen Griffin. You can wave, Steve. You're there. There you go. And also, we have our engineer, Mr. Paul Gdansky, who is also on this evening, just to go through a couple of the items that we approved to the subdivision. So just by way of brief background, again, like I stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this property sits in RG Zone, general residence. It's a four lot subdivision, which is zoning compliant subdivision, meaning that the lots in question do not require any variances from the zoning board with respect to this application. I know we did receive some comments from Booker Engineering with respect to drainage, and I know the conclusion of that memo was that we've mitigated the drainage with respect to this application. Since the last meeting, I know there were some comments, and I'll just give you a quick overview of what we've done, and then I'll turn it over to Paul Gdansky, just to go briefly. We did show adjacent driveways and properties on the plan. I know there was an issue of labeling driveways. We've done that. We've also removed the existing house driveway entrance on King's Highway. And again, I don't fully go with this, but I just wanted to give you an overview. We listed the trees to be removed on the table on the plans. I know there was a question of scale on one of the pages, on page two. We took care of that. And also, we corrected the note on 14 and showed some privacy trees. So without further ado, I just want to turn it over to Mr. Gdansky, just to go over the plat, just to give you a quick background of what's been changed from the last meeting. Paul?
Yeah, I think that basically what you said covers it with the addition of, we added, we changed the piping, added length, slope, size of pipes. We also showed the location of where the perk tests were done. We added landscaping around the property, like you said. We showed the driveways. We removed the driveway that goes out onto King's Highway from the existing residence. I believe that that covers it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have nothing further this time. We would request that after public comment, if we can address some of the comments after that, that would be great if we can do that. Your pleasure.
Okay, fine. Comments?
Yes. Ask a question? I think we also had to ask them to show where the houses were going to be, to shift them one way or the other, to try and minimize the impact on the other houses. I didn't hear that mentioned in what they said they did, so.
Okay, Mr. Bond, as we go through, we can bring that back up again. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go through the comments. I don't remember on the January 9th meeting, I'm sorry, the December 9th meeting, I don't believe the old comments were read in. If I'm going to read them in again, if they were, it's okay. Because I know some of the things that were on the early comments have been addressed. I still want to get them to the record. Okay, Jane Slaven on December 7th has two comments. Jane Slaven, January 8th, two comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, December 8th, 14 comments, of which one of them I want to read in. Number two, note number 14 on sheet one of three indicates that perk tests were run on his project site in the October of this year. This department has not, was not notified of these tests. This is critical because if this department had been notified, the applicant, builder, owner, designer would have been informed that all soil boring and determinations of groundwater are also required for the purpose, for the proposed subsurface dry well location, and that this department prefers that these tests be performed in the spring. And number four on this, correct depth perk test soil borings and determination of groundwater elevations still need to be performed at all of the subsurface detention systems, dry well locations. These tests shall be performed prior to this proposed, proposal receiving final approval to ensure adequacy to the proposed designs. So those two comments will have to be, among the other total 14, will have to be satisfied as of the December 8th letter. January 12th letter also has that same indication in it, but has 12 comments. Okay, Booker Engineering, December 8th. The applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impact with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the San Sun subdivision be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are eight. On their January 11th note, they have the same recommendation, but now there are five comments, so we're going to have to work those all out. Rockland County Drainage, dated November 6th. Please note that the above referenced site is outside the jurisdiction of the Rockland County Drainage Air Agency, and therefore, a storm control act permit is not required. Rockland County Sewer District, number one, December 2nd. They have two comments. Town of Orange Town Office of Recreation and Parks, dated November 9th. Okay, that'll have to be satisfied. Okay, I have a letter now from the Japan Historical Society, dated January 12th. It refers to a letter from Lawrence Vale, but it also says, while this property is not in the historical area of Japan or Palisades, it is a property in an area that has historical significance and is worthy of its preservation. Signed by Carol Laval. I have a letter from Larry Vow, dated January 8th, of which there are one, two, three, four paragraphs. I have a letter from Grant Parish, dated December 9th. Signed Shirley and Grant Parish. I have a letter from Kyle Weiss, dated January 11th. I also have a letter, January 10th, from Kyle Weiss, which is a full page and a picture. I have a letter from a Richard and Denise Wine Grand, I'm sorry if I said it wrong, on January 11th. I have a letter from Jim Saucer, January 13th, which is three pages. I have a from Ellen Grimm, January 13th. I have a letter from Peter McGrail, I guess, I'm sorry if I said it wrong, January 13th. I have a letter from an Ed and Marie La Presty, dated January 13th, which is three pages. I also have a letter from the Rockland County Highway Department, acknowledging us planning board as lead agent. Rockland County Highway Department, this project is out of our jurisdiction. Rockland and the Orange Town ZBA, no further correspondence. All right, let me continue. Orange Town ZBA saying no further correspondence is needed. I have a letter on November 4th. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department, dated December 9th, saying that we're lead agent. I also have the EAF and the Foley Environmental. Okay, Cheryl, is there anything else that I missed?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board right now. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going through my notes from the last meeting. I see we've addressed some of the issues. Bruce Peters has requested the perk tests be done. And I see he's reiterated that in his letter. The existing house driveway is now being pushed to Herring Road. And we did ask the applicant to consider the design of the project from four lots, three lots. I just want to ask one last time, was that considered?
I think, let me just say something. It's a conforming lot. It's a conforming four lot subdivision. They don't need any. I don't know if we're asking them to reduce it or whatever.
I didn't ask to reduce. I just asked if they considered it. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. It is four conforming lots. And they're well within their right for the subdivision.
Yeah, I can speak to that briefly if it's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that.
So we did consider it. I did speak to the applicant regarding this. And again, the position has been that it's really, the plan is to stick with the four lots because of the fact that, again, in this particular zone district, these lots are zoning compliant. Just a quick question on the comments that we heard earlier about the showing the houses on the plan. On page two of the submission that we submitted that was revised, I believe it was on the December 14 submission, on page two, it does show the building envelope for the proposed homes. So we do show that. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. I know it was a comment that you had read, Mr. Chair, so we do show it on the proposed plat. So again, just to go back and close the loop on it, we did consider, but we really want, and the applicant is going with the four lot subdivision because like it has been stated, it is a zoning compliant lot, no variances are required, and we do show the buildings. Just as to the perk test, I just want, Mr. Griffin, if you could just, I know there was a comment from Mr. Peters about the perk test. Mr. Griffin, Steve, if you can just speak to that just real quickly?
Yeah, we're agreeable to doing another perk test because we have to go in for soil borings anyway, so we'll do the perk test, retest.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the board understood that.
Okay, when you make, when you're going to do your perk test, make sure you get ahold of Mr. Peters so you can organize, so that you set up an appointment so that he has somebody there to witness the perk test. Otherwise, you see in the invitation, it has to be witnessed by one of their employees.
We will make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Young, anything else, sir?
No, sir, my questions have been answered. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. I see on page two that you did show the envelopes there. I was just looking. What is the square footage proposed for those three envelopes?
Steve, can you just speak to the square footage?
I'll take them one at a time. Lot number one is 3,265. Lot number three is 3,099. And lot number four is 3,602. Now that's floor area ratio. That's total lot coverage.
Thank you.
It's a floor area ratio. Thank you. I see you've already did with the soil boring, so that's another question I'll have to ask this time. On to page two, I was looking at your note in the northeast corner of King's Highway. Is the, was the plans drawn to scale on page two?
Yeah, the plans are drawn to scale.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the note that you have just below, we're just in the vicinity of the northwest corner of the plans, and you proposed abreviate screening, five to six feet high, 15 on center along the western and southern property lines. I think that there's an error on that. It's more like seven, the way you're showing it on the plan.
Paul, can you confirm that?
I agree.
I can verify it, but I, hold on. If it isn't, we'll correct it, but they will be 15 foot on center.
Okay, correct, because it's almost double the amount of trees you showed than the actual amount you're going to be planting there. Okay, that's all I have at this time. I'll wait for any other comments after I hear from the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mandel. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you very much. Actually, my questions were asked by Mr. Young, so I'm going to just wait until after the public portion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To pick up on the point that Mr. Mandel made on the spacing of the trees, eight foot would be more sufficient. 15 foot is a little ridiculous because the trees at that height, they would have a spread of approximately two and a half to three feet. So between each one, there'd be 10 feet of bare space. And I think that's a problem. The way you've shown it, when I looked at it, I picked up the same thing that Mr. Mandel did. I figured, oh, wow, this looks good. It's nicely done. They'll grow on. It'll be a nice hedge. I would not be comfortable on this unless they were quartered part, as opposed to 15. 15 is something that you'd see perhaps on an industrial site along a parking lot between two industrial areas, not in a residential area, particularly since you're having some questions about the actual houses. And I spent a little bit more time looking at the site today. And one thing that strikes me that could improve this plan quite, quite a bit, and it'll be a minor change. I want you to at least look at it and possibly investigate it. On lot two, if you look into the southwest corner, you will see that lot number one has a funny little cutout in it. Also, too, the problems of all of this exacerbates when you get to lot four. What I propose that you do is you take the southerly line of lot two, and this is a suggestion of someone who's been doing this for some time, and you move it in a northerly direction approximately 10 feet. You will have approximately eight feet that you could add on to lot four to keep the crowding problem from happening. But the other thing is, once you would do that, you would see that you no longer have that funny little bump in lot number one. Now, when you get down to lot number four, the one thing that's obvious that should be at the bare minimum is the house plan should be mirrored so that you have a 20-foot setback from the property of the saucers to the south rather than 10-foot as you're showing it now. All these things would substantially improve this development at this time. I would like you to be responsive to those and also deserve to ask any questions in return, and also, obviously, after the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Andrews?
No, sir, sorry. I want to have information from these gentlemen first on those comments.
Okay. Your microphone's off.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry about that. No, I was going to say, if we can address Mr. Dell's comments, if that's okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
That's what I wanted you to do. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Steve, can you address those?
Yeah, let me take the last one first there about doing a mirror image on lot four. I had considered this. The only thing is that on that southern side of the house, the way it stands right now, most of that first floor floor plan is the garage. So if you did a mirror image flip, you'd be having a lot of the living portion of the house facing the southern border. I'm open to it. It doesn't affect the way that the homes are built. I just, for privacy reasons, really, I figured that you'd want the garage side facing the existing homes.
And what about the eight feet versus 15, Steve? Are we okay with the eight feet?
I'd have to refer to Paul on that. If we can review it, if it works in the lot, square footage will stay the same. I have no issue with it.
Yeah, I mean, we went through a bunch of iterations, moving lot lines around, and it was very diff, it worked best this way.
You'll see, it's a minor change. You're talking about moving one lot line approximately eight feet. And that's on the lot number two. All I'm saying is, if you do that, you will solve two problems. Number one, one of the things the planning board is charged with is keeping irregular shaped lots from existing in the town. You have that funny little bump out. If you move it up, you will get rid of that bump out. You have plenty of area on that lot number one, lot number two to take care of that inch foot. And then you could add it down to the lot number four, which is where most of the problems have been on this in terms of its encroachment upon existing properties.
Where do you want to move? What lot line do you want to move eight feet?
Okay, if you look at lot number two, the southerly portion of it. Move that lot about approximately six to eight feet, whatever comes out to be, in a northerly direction. Reduce the size of lot two. What it does is it gets rid of that weird little corner that's in the of lot number one, which would be in the easterly portion, center of the easterly portion. I think you could see what I'm talking about. Now, once you do that, you then shift up, obviously, lot number three, which you'd have no problem with, and then you can add extra space on to lot number four, six to eight feet, which would enable you, again, to give six to eight feet of privacy and separation between the saucer property and lot number four.
If it works, I'm open to reviewing it.
All right, well, how would we find out if it works? What would you do?
We would have to, we would have to work on relaying the subdivision.
Well, not really relaying, just redrawing a couple of lines. But would you be comfortable, for example, if we were to have it, if the other members agree with me and the public agrees, obviously, it could be part of the decision that you would, you would do that and you would not have to come back? Because if you're doing a lot sign change like that, and we know what it is, and it's really de minimis, then it shouldn't be a problem.
That'd be fine, as long as it works.
Yeah, we're amenable, Mr. Dell, to doing that, as long as the shifting of the line doesn't trigger any type of variance. I mean, eyeballing this, I don't think it would, but we'll take a look at it.
You'll see the same thing. You've got plenty of square footage.
Yeah, if we can shift it, we're okay with doing that if it gets that issue resolved. So we're amenable. We'll look at it. Again, as long as we're not triggering any type of variances, I think we're okay with that. So we'll take a look at it. And again, if it's a question of a lot line shift, we can have this amended, you know, prior to an approval in terms of, you know, looking at the line just to make sure it works.
Right, I think you'll see it's a minor point. I checked the square footage. You can use the same that I would use. It shouldn't be an issue. Now, that's a big improvement. The other thing is the spacing of the trees. Now, I understand you might say it's a drafting error, but when you look at it, the plan on page two, the spacing looks quite nice. It looks acceptable. It looks like it's going to work. But at 15 feet, as I said, that's really inadequate. And I think you should go, eight feet shouldn't be any problem with those, how the other members feel. But then I think, again.
Can I interject here for a second, please?
Please.
Are those green giant aphrobites? That we're talking about? The trees?
Yes.
What kind of trees are they?
Yes.
They are. How big are they that you're putting in?
Five to six foot, but they grow pretty quick.
Yes, five to six foot. I think 15 feet is plenty because at maturity, they reach 15 feet. And if you put them too close together, you're going to choke them out, and they're going to die, and you got a problem with replacing them. I think the 15 feet is sufficient for that size of tree, that maturity.
Well, they didn't specify that variety. They just said aphrobite.
Okay, if they're green giant aphrobite, they grow 25 feet tall and have a spread of about 15 to 20 feet.
All right, so if you're going to say green giant, then I might, you know, feel a little bit more comfortable with it. But I think for the first number of years, it's not going to be very much screening.
Well, not for a while, but you take the chance of killing the trees as they mature.
I understand. I was on Akebor for years, and I also was a landscape contractor for about a decade. So I understand what you're talking about. It's always a change. But if they're going to put on that they're the variety that you talked about, that's different than what's written on the plan. Did you read? Can you read what's on the plan? Do you see what I'm saying? You're going to say it's a giant?
Somebody said green, green giant aphrobite.
It's got to say it on the plan, as we both know.
Well, I'm sure they're going to go to Akebor with a plan.
Well, whatever. It should be there now because we both know that sometimes Akebor misses things. All right, that's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much to the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Andrews?
Right now, it looks like you did most, all of what we asked the last meeting. The only comment I have was about the, the green giants. And I'd like to just wait to see what the public has to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. McCray?
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Just, just a couple of comments for the applicant. You know, during the last meeting, you heard from all the neighbors who opposed the current subdivision plan and the concerns for the planning board. And I'm looking at this, the plan hasn't changed much. You know, you made, you made a couple of adjustments here and there. But I just wanted to read one, one comment from the neighbor that kind of, kind of resonated with me. December 9th from Sherling Grant Parish. I know no one cares about our or our neighbors' feelings about the addition of a subdivision on a dead end street. So that struck me because it's, it's our job as the planning board on the 21A to fully consider the effect of the adjacent properties in the neighborhood. So while I know everybody's harping on the compliance with the zoning, that's only one aspect of the planning board review. And that doesn't outweigh the effect of this plan on the neighbors. So we still have to consider the effect on the immediate neighbors and the adjacent neighborhood as a whole. It's, it's part of the planning board review. So I understand you, you know, you're going to keep saying complies, complies, but that's not the only thing we look at. I just wanted, I made that point last time and I just want to make it again. That that's not the sole thing that we need to look at if it complies. It's the effect on the neighborhoods that we also have to, have to look at too. So does the plan need some work? I agree, Mr. Dell brought up a good plan to maybe alleviate the effect on a neighborhood. And that's something to look into. And I agree with that. And that's my only comment. Like I said, this plan hasn't changed much. So my opinion hasn't changed much. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bond?
Did you say Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Okay. What I was trying to impress upon the applicant last week, last time, last meeting, was that they show the actual, where the actual house is going to go within the window that's there. I don't really think that's too much to ask and that's, I would think is certainly within our purview to do that, you know? I think that would help everything if, if we could see actually where the house was going to go, you know? Because they're certainly not going to be, the windows are big in, in all these places. The house is not going to be that big. So. And then my other point is, I guess my other is a question for, for Jane is, Jane, I understand it's a four lot subdivision, but you're saying there's no variances required for it? I was just wondering, they, I would think they would, at the very minimum, need to go to Akebor to get the, the existing variance, the pre-existing variance or the, because it's too close to the road. The existing house is too close to the road. So why wouldn't they have to go to get that at least reaffirmed? That, that makes no sense to me. And I don't ever recall seeing another subdivision that, of this type, that they haven't had to go to zoning board, you know?
Well, the existing house, yeah, right. The setbacks that are non-compliant to zoning are existing to existing lot lines. The subdivision is not creating-
Yeah, but they still have to get that reaffirmed by the zoning board?
Oh, I can-
I'm not saying check it down, but they still go. I, I, I just, I know in the past we have said they had, they had to go at least to get them reaffirmed. Not that they're going to kick them down. And, you know, I'm not saying I'm against the subdivision, but I just-
I, I don't think that's necessarily legally correct, but we, you know, I can defer to the town attorney on that one. But they're existing, they're existing non-conforming setbacks to the existing property line. Subdivision is not creating or expanding that non-conformity. The other lots are conforming to zoning and while it does seem, well, it does seem that, that, not sure I'm echoing. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The, the-
Somebody's got your mic. Please shut it off. Shut it off. Somebody with the B. Jane, is there any way where you can shut that off?
No, the BB is actually, I think Bruce Bond might have thought he dialed in on something else. So it's showing up his hand, but it's locked. I think we're better now. So.
Okay.
The, the proposed lots that are affected by the subdivision, all of those elements match our zoning code.
That's what you're saying, then I'm okay with. But I would still like to see them show the house, where they're going to put the house within the window. I think that would go along-
And you could request that, but as far as zoning right now?
I thought I could request that last meeting, but obviously it wasn't done. So that's my issue.
Right. But in reference to zoning code, they showed the bulk table? So the maximum size house is what they're putting?
I, I understand they have a maximum size, but it'd be nice to see where they're going to put the house within the building window. Because the window is way bigger than, than where the house could possibly be, you know?
Right. I, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Bond. I'm just saying, I can't-
That's not directed at you. That's just a, just a statement. So, all right. That's it.
Right. So, and again, if they were to come back with a house that didn't meet the bulk requirements that they're proposing right now, then they'd have to come back to you because it wouldn't be in conformance with the planning board approval.
Yeah, but if, if, if we approve, if we approve the, the subdivision, then we're not going to get to see where the house is going to go. I want to see where that's going to go before we approve it. That's what I had asked for last, last meeting, the last meeting.
Excuse me, Bruce. Bruce, did you look?
What the, what the problem is doing that. I, I just don't get it, you know?
Bruce, did you look at page two of the map? They have houses drawn on page two. It's not just an envelope.
On the second plan, Bruce, there's two sets of plans. On the second-
His house is drawn with porches and every driveways and everything.
Okay. So, so that's, they're not going to move within that window then is what they're, is, is that what they're telling us? Or they could still move depending on when they get a buyer is going to buy the lot and says, hey, I want to shift it this way. I want to do whatever. What are we approving? Are we approving the, the building envelope or are we approving where the houses are?
Bruce, if you look on, on the maps, it is actually showing, it's not, it's not showing the building envelope. It is actually showing the building.
Okay. All right. But he didn't mention that in his, you know, when you asked him to give a statement, he didn't even mention that they even did that, you know?
But he, but he did because Mr. Mendel asked him for the square footage and he answered that question.
He, he gave the square footage. I, I get that, you know, but there's square footage. It's up to square footage of the lot. That's how you come up with the square footage. It's not necessarily. So, all right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask, can I ask Mr. Dell to clarify something?
Sure, go ahead.
He talked about mirroring lot four. So basically flipping it over. Did he intend for just the house to be flipped over or did he want the 10-yard side yard setback on the southern side next to the existing adjacent neighbor? I think that's what he meant was to flip the bulk requirements, not just the house layout. So I want him to clarify that.
I think you are right, Ms. Slavin. The idea was, of course, just to give as much space as possible between the southerly neighbor and, and this subdivision. By mirroring it, you would basically accomplish that. You'd have approximately a 20, a 15 to 20 foot setback. In addition to the additional area we were talking about by shifting the lot line, should give them adequate screening. But the problem that the applicant did mention was that we couldn't tell this, of course, from the plans we were given. But I figured now it'll be the garage that'll be close to the property. Whereas proposed to the mirror, it'll be the house that's closer.
No, 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 no. Mr. Dell, that's why I asked you to confirm that.
Okay, please.
Right. So the house can stay in the same orientation and the driveway can stay on the northern side. It's just you're moving the setbacks from one side to the other. So the southern side would be the 10-foot and the northern side would be the 20-foot. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The southern side would be the 20-foot. I'm sorry. So that it's buffering, buffering the existing neighbor. But the driveway can stay where it is and the garage can stay where it is.
All right. That's a good point. And yes, that's, I, I'm sorry I articulated that clearly, but yes, you're right.
Yeah, I, I understood that Mr. Griffin seemed to think that you wanted the whole house flipped. It's not that. It's the setbacks.
Well, that could have been, that could have been one way of doing it. And this is, of course, the other. The obvious goal is to get as much separation any way we can from the southerly property. And I agree, we should move it in the house, the whole thing, in a northerly direction. I think that would solve that problem. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does the applicant understand what Mr. Dell is, is looking for?
I understand what he's looking for.
I'm very clear on-
I'm very clear on the, on moving the, switching this, switching the setbacks. But as far as the lot line change he wants, I'm not clear.
Okay. I'm not too clear. I mean, if, if I just may suggest something or say something, Mr. Dell, if you correct me on that, between one and three, where it meets lot two, that little corner, there's like a little notch there?
Yes.
Way of taking that and just straightening it out. The line that runs at an angle runs directly into the lot two, the lot line on number two, not onto number three, if you know, if, if that made sense.
Yes.
No matter what, you're going to need that lot line at an angle. It can't be straight. There's not enough lot area.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what we, we just need to shift the house. That's going to accomplish what we're looking to accomplish. The way that lot line make any difference to anything. You know, that's just my opinion.
Okay. I, I think it would. All I'm saying is that the southerly line of lot number two, you extend it in a northerly direction, decreasing that lot size slightly. It's a very large lot anyway, maybe about by eight feet. Then when you extend the lot line between one and three, it'll reach the corner rather than having that little bump out. You will then have extra space that you could possibly take from three, give it to lot four and further increase the setback. Is that clear?
All right. I think I got it.
Okay. That's all. It's a minor thing. With that one drafting situation, you would straighten out two problems. You get rid of an irregular shaped lot and also you give extra room for lot number four. Okay? And if that's added on to this switching of the setback, I think the neighbors should be about as pleased as anyone can, given this situation. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we got that straight. Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. I want everybody who wishes to speak to speak. I want you to have the opportunity to speak. We've received a lot of letters. I, 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 like I said, I want everybody to, to speak on this. I'm going to allow you only three minutes because it seems like we have about 45 or so people that want to speak on this. If the person in front of you says your exact same thing that you want to say, please just state your name and your address and just say that the person in front of me has the same concerns I have. And this way we can move on and we can get this all done in a very orderly manner and everybody will be allowed to speak. Okay? I'm going to keep time on my wife. As you get close to the three minute, I'm going to hold it up so that you know that you're going to come to an end. And please, with three minutes, I think is enough for everybody to speak their mind. And I think three minutes would be courteous to everybody else and not just go over it. Okay? So I think Ms. Slavin has the, the order in which people checked in. So whomever wants to speak, please turn your microphone on, state your name and your address and you have three minutes. Anybody?
Richard Wigan, 14 Dietera Street, Tepan.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm directly behind lot one and partially behind lot four. I'm very concerned with the drainage, not the drainage, but the runoff from those lots. By building the houses there, it's going to take away a lot of the natural land that would absorb the water. And there's going to be a tendency and a heavy rain for it to run over my property like a waterfall. My property is three feet lower than lots one and four. I see no treatment with the drainage in that respect along the property line.
Okay. I know the consultants, the drainage consultants have looked at the proposals that they've made and they have said that they have worked it out where they will maintain that there will be a, a zero, you know, increase in drainage. So that-
It's not the drainage. It's not the drainage. It's the runoff.
Which is drainage.
Drainage, drainage is, is one thing, but when, when the rain is hitting hard, it doesn't have time to drain and it runs off. It's going to run off to my property. You know, drainage, drainage is okay if the water is sitting there. But when, when it's a heavy rain, it's just like the roof of your house. It just, it just pours down before it has a chance to absorb into the ground.
Okay.
I think, I think there needs to be a ditch or a wall of some sort or something that's going to prevent that water from running over into my yard. And it will happen in a heavy rain.
Okay. Ms. Slavin, can you kind of answer that?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's engineer is actually on the call.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Mr. Gdansky, can you address the concerns?
We've provided zero net increase in runoff. So the runoff from the roofs are carried right into the drywells that are proposed on the lot. As far, as far as runoff, runoff from the lot, it will continue the same way it has for hundreds of years. It will run towards his property like it did before, but it will be grass like it was before.
How can it runoff like it did before when you, when you have a, a, a house there, a driveway there? And all this, all this natural chance to stop the water won't be there.
Well, the water from those items you just mentioned is going to be directed directly back into the ground.
But being directly directed into the ground is not going to absorb the water fast enough in a heavy downpour. This is my point. If the water, if it, if it's a, a light rain and it has chance to absorb into the ground, that's one thing. But if it's a heavy downpour, all that, all that building, the driveways, the porch, the house is, is taken away from the ability for the ground to absorb anything.
But that's why we offset it with putting that water into the drywells.
Okay. Mr. Weingard, you have, you've gone over your three minutes. The applicant will look, he has to come back. If, if, because I'm looking at the map right now and right now your house has the garage behind it, which will be removed. And I, I was driving back there today and there was a lot of, of stone driveway and everything else. All that is going to be removed and grass and shrubbery and plantings will go in that area. So I think that's going to limit a lot of the, the runoff. Okay? Okay.
Uh, nah, I'm not really happy with that. Can, is there, is there a way to put a, a, a concrete wall up there, a cement wall, a berm, something to stop that runoff from coming over my, my yard? Did you see my yard when you were there today?
Yes, I did.
Well, you see that it's a, it's a three-foot drop and the property, and the property in lots one and four are sloping down there also. So it's not only a, a three- So it's not only a, a three-foot drop, but it's a, a gentle slope toward my property.
Okay. Tom, another thing is, um, he's gonna put in all of those trees on that property line, that'll absorb a lot of water too. Which aren't there right now, so, um, that'll take up, uh, trees, shrubs, take up a lot of water. So.
I'm also open to putting the trees on a berm.
Excuse, excuse me, sir, when are you open till?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, that, I think we should continue with all the public comments and then address them at the end.
Thank you.
Instead of having a debate, yeah.
Right, okay, um, these can be discussed, okay, very good, okay. Can I have the next person who wishes to speak?
Um, can I speak? My name is.
State your name and your address, please.
Sorry?
State your name and address.
Uh, Mara Lopresti, twenty-five Herring Avenue. You already have, you already have my husband's letter, but I have a question, whether it be silly or not. I just am curious to know if everybody on the board has taken a ride to Herring Avenue, knows what the street actually looks like, if I'm allowed to ask that question.
Yeah, well, I've been there, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I've been there.
I, I'm just, I, I were curious to know if everybody has been here and looked at it, thank you very much.
I've been there.
Thank you. Okay, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
My name is Diane Donahue, I am the owner of twenty-seven Herring Avenue and the resident of twenty-seven Herring Avenue. My question is this, I was raised on Staten Island, and unfortunately, that island, which was beautiful, street by street was taken down, ethnic mansions were put up. This is a beautiful block. What are these houses gonna look like? Are they going to blend in with the block, or are they gonna stand out?
I believe the, the applicant is gonna build houses that are gonna conform with the lot, with the, uh, surrounding area.
You believe, do we know that to be true? Do we know it's not going to be little McMansions that don't shit with the look of the block? That stand out, that take away from our property values that stand out?
Okay, thank you very much.
I didn't get an answer, but that would be nice to know.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
It said, I did not receive an answer to that question.
Uh, can the applicant answer that, what type of home is it gonna be, this, a similar home to what is gonna be there now? Or is it a much larger home?
Are they going to blend in with the look of the block, are they going to stand out? Are they going to take away?
Ma'am, that's what I'm trying to ask the applicant right now. Okay, your microphone is off. Whoever's gonna speak from the advocate, please just turn their microphone on and then talk.
Unmuted.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, no, what I, what I was going to suggest, I know Mr. Slaven mentioned it, but if we can go through all the public comments, and then what we'd like to do, we can address all of the, the comments that have been raised by the public at the end, if that's okay, I just think it would be, that we're keeping track of the comments, as opposed to, you know, going back and forth, because it just, I just think it would be easier, if that's okay, with, with the board.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A very quick confirmation, uh, I believe these houses will be going in front of the Architecture and Community Appearance Board to review, and all those issues will be addressed there rather than here. Am I correct in that?
Yes, they will, because they do have to go from here to there, the ACO board.
Okay, so it will be another hearing on this at another board, which stats more to them, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak on this project?
Hi, yes, uh, my name is Sandy Bond, I live at twenty-three Herring Avenue. And I'm gonna reiterate what I said at the previous hearing, which is that this street is extremely narrow. And you're now adding, I believe, three driveways to Herring Avenue. And that is gonna tack, overtax our neighborhood, this street, where the garbage trucks, the recycle bins, uh, the recycled trucks have to back in. Uh, most recently, the snowplow struggled, uh, because people are parked on the street. These are going to be single-wide driveways. Uh, inevitably, it's, uh, unrealistic to believe that, uh, the houses that are gonna be put up are only gonna have two drivers, there's gonna be more. Their visitors don't understand that if they park across from a driveway, you can't get out. I have this problem, this struggle, uh, numerous times, uh, weekly, with trying to get in and out of my driveway, and I have to go knock on doors to ask whomever's guest to move. So this is an issue with the width of the street, you're now adding three driveways on. Uh, it's also gonna be an issue if we need emergency vehicles and people are parked on the street, and this is towards King's Highway, which has a, a, a lot of traffic in the mornings, and in the afternoons, and in the early evenings. People are not gonna be parking on King's Highway, they're gonna be parking on Herring Avenue. So I think this is, uh, gonna overtax this narrow street, which is basically a glorified driveway. It doesn't have the normal width that other streets have, uh, in the surrounding area. And I think that is a huge concern by putting four houses on this block, and those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Anyone?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, I just wanna add on, my name is Kathy Hilldebrand, I live at ten Herring Avenue, Spark Hill, New York.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna add on a very important fact that, uh, uh, actually, two things, first, I have a disabled son that was unable, he's, he actually was eligible to have the bus pick him up in my driveway, and the school bus was unable to do so because the street is so narrow. They couldn't, even a small, tiny bus could not back in and out of this small area. So therefore, my son, that has a disability, had to go to the bus stop every day. When he was, he had the right to actually have the bus pick him up at the house, but the, it's ridiculous, the way the street is, so narrow. And you're gonna add to a lot of problems, and not only that, you're adding to, there's a bus stop there with children, and all of the members from the board need to come down and see this street for themselves, to see what's going on, and how the cars are parked, and how adding three driveways is absolutely unacceptable. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, this is Steel Hickey, Steel Hickey, Herring Avenue five, I will be directly across the street from lot size four. Um, I'm listening to Robert Dell and, uh, Mr. Bond, and I'm believing, and they're actually answering some of the questions I had about the arrangement of these lot sizes. And, um, I, I do believe that number four needs to be moved over further to the east. I do not believe that we need a number one at all. I believe that this plot size should be restricted to three buildings, and each one, uh, uh, squared out or rectangle out into three beautiful lots, which solve all sorts of problems that you have there. I know that the last time we talked about that, even though that should come up the code with these homes clients, but I see that when we came into this, it looks like the job is already done, instead of four lots, or, um, a property here. So I'm not happy to see that. My, I have a question about the driveways, at one point, I thought you said the driveways were gonna be on the, um, on the north side, not on the, the only one driveway would be staying on Herring Avenue would be number two. Four, three, and one would be on the north side, so that's my question about that. Last, but not, well, not last, but not least. Um, Mr. Dell is in charge of the pruning of the giant arborvitae. Well, you know what, put the big ones in there, and if they become too wide, we have this sinkball pruning, so you can go with the big ones. Uh, now, last but not least, uh, I understand that Mr. Griffin has, um, also, um, built homes in Piermont, Liberty Street, Dead End Street in Piermont. And I was told that if I wanted to go see what happened down there, I should, and I took a trip. And actually, the charm of that whole neighborhood has looked pretty strange. So when someone here says, what, uh, have these houses conformed to what we have on our street? That's a question I have too, because I saw what happened in Piermont, and if anybody's interested, go down to Liberty Street, Dead End, you wanna see if you can turn around or not, keep an eye on the street. And this is another project from Mr. Griffin. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, yes. Say your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, my name's Pete McGaragall, I live in the house that's adjacent to the proposed lot number one. And I did send an, a, a letter to the, to the board, and I believe that you have it in your possession, I just wanna highlight a couple of things real quickly. I wanna again reiterate that there's a large tree on the property line adjacent to my lot, it's listed as number twenty-one in the diagram. And when you see the proposed grade change, and the, the existence of that tree, and where the proposed soil stockpile is, I think that that tree is gonna pose a risk to my home and any building that is constructed on lot number one. I also wanna highlight that note thirty-seven on the plan mentions the possible demolition of the house on, I believe, lot number two, but it incorrectly identifies it as lot number one in the plan. So I wanna reiterate that, I think that the tree should be removed, because it poses a risk to my house now. And it's gonna pose an increased risk once they change the grading in order to account for the foundation that is proposed for lot number one. You can see in the contour lines that they're anticipating changing the grading. So I also wanna highlight that that is likely to change the pattern of runoff from this lot. So therefore, the comment that was made earlier about the water running off for the past hundred years is probably inaccurate. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this comment, project?
Kyle Weiss, four ninety King's Highway.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanna piggyback and I guess reiterate what other neighbors have said. I live directly opposite Herring Avenue, so the existing structure is something I see every day. Um, it would absolutely destroy the character of, of the neighborhood if that structure were to be torn down at any point in time, as well as filling this lot with three homes would do the same. Um, someone else suggested reducing it to three homes, I think that would be a very nice compromise. Um, as well as revisiting this whole drainage thing, as the water currently runs down Herring Ave, and across King's Highway onto my property as well. Um, that is all for now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, my name is Larry Vale, I'm at three eighty-nine King's Highway, uh, four or five blocks, uh, to the E, uh, to the, uh, west of, of this project. Uh, first of all, I, I, I did send a letter, and I won't read the whole thing, I just wanna touch upon a couple of the points. And one is about the historical significance of this house and this particular area. Um, as, as Mr. Weiss just said, uh, it's a particularly charming historical area. And I, I just wanna say one positive thing about this project, uh, no matter how it turns out. I think this is a real opportunity to save this house from destruction. It's been decaying for a long time, and anything the board can do to make sure that this is the viable structure, the old house, uh, would be very, um, very much appreciated. It really adds value to the, to the neighborhood, it's been around for a hundred and fifty years, and I hope it's around for another hundred years. Um, what I don't wanna see is it, um, you know, neglected more, so maybe with a new owner, it can be rehabilitated, and that will at least preserve that. But, but I, there is something about neighborhood, um, character that I would like to mention. I realize the applicant is in an RG zone, I live in the same RG zone. Um, this zoning was made for little cottages. That's why it's ten thousand foot lots, if you look around, all the houses that are older than maybe twenty years are fairly small, they're capes, they're cottages, they're single stories. And, you know, sure, he may comply with the, um, with the, um, square footage of the lot in this zoning, but I think these are pretty large houses that are being proposed. And if you look at a street that's had these McMansions put on them, they may conform with the zoning, but they don't necessarily conform. And, and, and they don't conform to the neighborhood character. That, one problem is, one, I hope this doesn't happen, and maybe there's a way to keep it from happening. Sure, there's no variance required because of the subdivision here, but it's not impossible that the applicant would then go to the zoning board, say, well, now I need a, a height variance, because I can't build a house, it, it just won't sell if it isn't three thousand square feet. So, um, I would like the board to keep in mind the character of that. Now, one further comment, they said, oh, well, that's what the Architectural Review Board does. I was on the Architectural Review Board for five or six years, and never did I see one design change whatsoever. If you are lucky, if you could get a color of the house changed. Typically, typically, the, the Architectural Review Board would add, um, screening. I think they're off now, that, they would add screening to the, um, like, has already been proposed here. And I'd like to talk about that too. Usually, the arborvitae screening is made when someone is ashamed of what's behind it. I, I don't mind if there's screening, especially for, if it's a backyard against a side yard, that's very understandable. But I'd rather see something without arborvitae that people are proud to look at. Um, the, the other, the one, two other points very quick.
Can I get three minutes?
Have I used?
Three minutes.
Yeah, I, 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 I have one very important thing to say. I, I've got, um, there's a tree, it's a beech tree, it's number twenty-three on the plan. For some reason, the engineers have decided to put a drainage structure underneath it. They've, it's the only one with a drainage, um, structure in the front yard on any of the proposed lots. I have no idea why they wanna get rid of that tree, it's a magnificent tree. It, it, uh, mirrors the tree on Grant Parish's, uh, property, which is another beach across Herring. He's on this call, he can talk about that. But, but I see no reason not to preserve that, it's far from the lines, it helps preserve the character of King's Highway, and I'd like them to find a way to do it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak, uh, my name is Jim Soder, I, uh, live at, uh, six Herring Avenue, I'm the property uh, adjacent to lot, uh, four. Uh, I appreciate some of the comments and recommendations that have been made about uh, creating more distance between our property line and the proposed house on that lot. And, uh, I appreciate the fact that the builders willing to go back and look at that, and, uh, Ms. Slaven also, uh, and Mr. Dell seem to understand our concern, and because we feel absolutely the most squeezed by this subdivision, and anything you can do to improve that's gonna certainly change, help my opinion of the overall plan. Um, the garage, uh, for this house, which is only sort of roughly placed there, is a little confusing to me, it's, it must be a, a, is it thought to be a garage that's underneath the house? And if so, wouldn't that sort of increase the overall height of the house? And is there any sense of what height these houses will be, or, or, or thought to, or planned to be? It's very difficult to respond to an overall plan, uh, even though I understand this is a subdivision, uh, meeting, when you have no sense of what's coming in the future, and, and that is a little bit disturbing to me. I share my neighbor's comments about the narrowness of the street and the concern, and the overloading, uh, by now having three driveways, which inevitably means a, at a minimum four cars that are going to populate a very narrow fifteen-foot wide street. And as far as the ar- arborvitae screening, uh, I say it's better than nothing, uh, but I would, uh, argue that, uh, it would be good to have as high a, an arborvitae as eight feet. And I am no expert as to what's the ideal spacing between them, but when we talk about we, how quickly they'll become mature, I consider myself, uh, mature, and I would like to live to see them mature, and I'm in my late sixties, and I don't wanna have to wait, I would like to have privacy within a short period of time. Um, so, those are my comments right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sir, my name is Mike Puddle. I live at 14 Haring Avenue. I've got three, three points to make, some of which echo what my, my neighbors have said. Haring Avenue is a very narrow dead end street at 16 feet across. And as it is now, sir, many cars park on the street on a, on a regular basis. Adding two more driveways to this street is only going to increase the, the number of cars that are, that are parked on the street. That's going to impact refuse removal, snow removal, emergency services. And from what I see on the plan, and maybe the applicant correct me if I'm mistaken, but it looks like the driveway that's at 483 Kings Highway now, the driveway that lets out onto Kings Highway is going to be removed. So that's going to leave on that property one less outlet that's going to add more traffic to Kings Highway. The other thing is, in terms of the lot square footage, I sent a letter to the board earlier this afternoon. There's 13 houses on Kings Highway, 11 of which have a square footage of under 2,100 square feet. And the two houses that have a square footage over 2,100 square feet are about 2,600 and 2,400 square feet. So the developer's proposed square footage by, by any yardstick is not in keeping with the characteristic of this neighborhood of relatively small houses on a, on a small dead end street. It's just simply not in keeping with that characteristic. And the last thing that I want to bring to the board's attention is after the construction vehicles are done with building three houses, I would, I would assume that the road, the surface, the road surface is going to be pretty well damaged. And I'm wondering if the board has a plan or if it's in the board's purview to condition approval on the subdivision that the Haring, that the road be resurfaced after construction is over. And so those are my three points. I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes.
My name's Elizabeth Carrera, and I live at 486 Kings Highway. And my concern is for the house right across from me, which is the old house, which is in decay. Everybody's talking about these new houses that are being developed, but there's nothing being said about that house and how long it's actually going to take to be fixed or maybe they bring it down and bring two more houses into this neighborhood. I mean, these are things that have to also be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else have any question or comments? Yes? State your name and address for the record, please.
Grant and Shari Parish. We live opposite the, the beautiful subdivision. And I must say, everyone's covered, I think, a lot of points I have. I'm a little concerned about, again, the narrow street. I mean, there are no sidewalks. Kids ride their bikes, they walk, they walk down to the bus stop. Out here, I no longer live here, so I don't have to worry about my children. But I do worry about the little guys that, and some, some of the people on this street are not really that careful. And, and I would recommend that a couple of board members maybe take a ride up to this place and take a look. We've lived here 40, about 46 years. And I've seen a lot of changes. I just want to mention a couple of things that maybe no one's mentioned. Are there, are these homes, they're basements? I didn't see anywhere that that was indicated, yes or no. Since it's a bird's eye view, it's a little hard to get, quite frankly, square footage a bit out of my grasp, so. But I can certainly read a plan, I guess. And I didn't see any indication. Yeah, are there basements?
We can find out, I, I don't know. Let me ask the applicant real, are there basements?
Yes, there's basements.
Okay, they're basements.
I can tell you one thing. When we moved in this house, we had to lay concrete because it was a dirt floor. And we put in a couple of sump pumps just to be on the safe side. And about two feet below what would have, what would be the concrete flooring where the sump pumps were dug, we had something like shale, a sandstone. It was pretty dense, you could tip it away, but it was extremely dense. And which leads me to believe, I'm not an engineer, but there's probably a hard plate of some sort where the water gets to a certain point where it runs along this, this hard surface that doesn't perk down. So I would caution when you perk, you're going deeper than two or three feet. And I've got a couple other points. Can I just put them on paper and send them in? Rather than torture you guys this late at night? Excuse me.
Tom, you're muted.
I'm not.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
I muted myself, I'm sorry. Yeah, if, if, what I suggest to you, if you have that many more concerns, please put them on paper and send it to the building department and they will be addressed at the next meeting.
I'd like to defend the beech tree. It's a, an American copper beech. And there aren't many of those in this, this county. And that sits on, is that property lot one? Yes, lot one on that.
You're, you're over your three minutes, so that's all you have the time for right now. If you have any concerns, please send it to the town building department. Okay? Thank you very much.
Planning board.
Yes, which is part of the building department. Send it to the planning board, yeah. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Anybody else that has any questions or comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Do you hear me?
Excuse me?
Do you hear me? Is that La Preste 25 Haring Avenue?
Get your name and address.
Ed La Preste 25 Haring Avenue. I want to echo Larry's concern about the historic nature that the house was. No, my wife spoke. I saw, echoed that the house.
If you have the same concerns as your wife, there's a lot. Trying to conserve time and get everybody to be able to speak.
I'll be really quick. Historic nature of the house is the daughter of Samuel A. Harrings. Also, construction, how long will it take? Where are the vehicles going to be parked? There is provisions on the plans as far as getting permission to park on Haring Avenue. Currently, there is a trailer parked underneath the tree canopies, which they shouldn't be. And I echo the driveways and houses. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
I would like to make one more request briefly. My name is Jim Sauter, 6 Haring Avenue. I had requested at the December 9th meeting that an outline of our driveway, house and garage be added to the plans as it has been for all the other adjoining and neighboring properties. And I would like to request that when they're revising the drawings to show a more accurate placement of the arborvities, that that be added to the plans when they're resubmitted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, one more time. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
I have, I have one more thing to add. My name is Richard White, and I spoke already.
If you've spoken already, please, we're, we're, we have to move on. We have more business. I understand everybody's concern. Save it for the next meeting. If you want, send it on paper to the planning board, care of the building department, and it will be addressed. But we have to move on now. All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to close the public session?
Andrews moves to close the public session.
Mr. Andrews moves to close the public. Do I have a second?
Beckett Mandel's second.
Mandel's seconds, thank you very much. Okay, all in favor of closing the public session? I, any opposed? No opposition, thank you very much. I think there's a lot of concerns with, with the, the community. I think a lot of these will be addressed, I believe, if the board kind of agrees with this, to let them go to the next step where they go to ACO Board and then let. Excuse me. Okay. To let them go ahead, let them go to ACO Board. I think the, the neighborhood will see what type of houses they would have, they want to put on. We have concerns in respect to lot line changes. And I think maybe these could all be done. I don't know what the going on it is.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think you're jumping the gun. I thought the next step was that the applicant was going to answer some of those questions.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Swainy. Okay, do the board members have any questions they want to ask the applicant now in respect to what the public comments are?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mandel. A question regarding the driveway from lot number two. Why did they put it on Haring rather than on Kings Highway? Was there a rationale for that?
I believe some, I believe the board asked us to do that.
No, we asked you to remove one of the driveways.
Mike, I think we did ask him, that was asked at the last meeting for them to move that driveway onto Haring.
No, we asked them to remove one, Bruce.
No, they asked them to remove the one off Kings Highway and put it on Haring, on, on the existing house.
No, I don't think so.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, but I'm saying that's, that's what I got at the last meeting.
No, I got that they had to remove one, but why not Kings Highway rather than Haring?
Yeah.
That's my question.
I can look at it being either way, but that, that's what was asked them at the last meeting. That's what they did.
They asked them to remove one at the last meeting. I'm just asking the applicant right now, is there a reason that you couldn't put, rather than Haring, put it on Kings Highway?
We could do either.
They would make more sense to put it on Kings Highway and remove one driveway off of Haring and reduce the number of vehicles on Haring. This is no way to widen that road. I've been on that road. I drove down that road, I drove over the property, I walked over the property. It's an extremely narrow road. I think most of the other members of this board did that. So that's just my suggestion. I know what the other members of the board feel, but that's my suggestion that they move it from Haring onto Kings Highway. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, let me go down because I, I've got a feeling that the board is going to go along with that. Mr. Young, how do you feel about moving the driveway off of Haring and putting it onto Kings Highway for lot number one?
I agree with Mr. Mandel.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Mandel made the motion, or not the motion, but this is a suggestion, so he agrees with it. Mr. Swainy?
I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
Agreed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I agree. That's at least they can deal with the development on Haring Avenue.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, no, I have no issue with it, but I understand why the applicant did it because that's what I got out of the last meeting was what, that's what he was kind of instructed to do at the last meeting. That's the way I interpreted it, but.
Maybe there's a little bit of confusion on it. So the applicant is asked to move the driveway from lot number one onto Kings Highway? Do you have any problem with that?
No problem at all, no problem at all.
Make that as a condition, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we will. I just wanted to make sure that the applicant would, would go along with it before I. Okay, do, do. I'm going to repeat on it. Okay, anyway, if we want to move along with this and given preliminary, I'm going to ask for a lead agent.
Mr. Chairman? Again, Mr. Chairman, again, I said just before, you know, the whole, the whole point of the public session, we said that at the end, the, the applicant was taking notes, was going to answer those questions. We still haven't given him a chance to answer, answer any of those questions.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, i- if I may, just to go through, I know you have a long night ahead of you, but I'll try to get as much of the comments that I have, if that's okay with you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So first of all, thank you for the comments of the public and, and of the planning board. We do appreciate it and we, we're going to take those into consideration. Just so everyone understands, you know, the applicant here, and, and he's been, he's told me, and we're going to tell you tonight, you know, the idea here is not to have a, a site plan in homes that are not in character with the neighborhood. You know, I know everyone on the board understands this, but I want the public to understand, you know, we, we as the applicant, we are working with the parameters that are given to us, right? And, and those parameters are what's set forth in the town zoning code. So what we did, what we proposed, we put up a plat together that shows a zoning compliant subdivision. We also showed a plat with the location of the homes that shows what is zoning compliant site plan, or again, just the location of the house, what it would look like. The applicant is not looking for variances for these homes, not looking for height variances. I know there's, there's some folks that mentioned, you know, we can go to the zoning board. That's not the applicant's intention. Well, what's in the bulk table that we have on the plan is what we are looking to do and no more. With respect to lot two, the driveways, one of the suggestions we talked about, and I'm glad the board picked up on it, was to eliminate the three driveways on Haring and just have the two and two on Kings Highway. And we will accommodate the board as, as we, we do that. Regarding, I know there was a comment early on about the harmonious nation, relationship of the neighborhood. And I just want to make sure the board understands, under your town code, and I know that your town attorney and, and building inspector are familiar, you have chapter 21 which deals with subdivision and chapter 21A that deals with site plan approval. I know that provision comes from the site plan chapter. And with respect to chapter 21, we, we believe that this plan does comply with chapter 21. It also complies with state law, chapter 276 of the subdivision law. Just to go on to now drainage. Broker engineering has looked at the drainage and runoff. We, we believe that this plan will actually make the drainage and runoff better than what it is today, given the improvements, given the, the screening, the plantings that would be put in. So we think we're making the situation better by, by having the improvements to the site with result, resulting from the subdivision. The other note I, I want to talk about briefly, I know we've mentioned historical nature of the home. Now, and I'm glad the residents have pointed out, the home, while it is old, in, in, quite old, it's not listed on any federal, state or, or town historical register. That being said, we do appreciate and we do understand that the house does have a historical nature about it. I know from the applicant, they're going to try as much as they can to preserve that house. Again, right now, no plans to, to tear that house down. But again, that's something that if we have to go and either do work to that home and modify it under your code, that's going to require us to come back to, to the board for site plan approval. Site plan approval is not required for the other lots under your town code because they're single family homes. But we do have to go to ACO Board. So to address the concerns of the neighbors, we're going to go to ACO Board. You're going to see the house that we're looking to design. And there'll be time to address the design and character of the house at, at that time. Again, just to bring it back full circle, this is for subdivision approval. We believe we did a plan that is compliant. Again, on Haring Road, I live down the road, I know it's narrow. But again, town, town highly had no comments on this particular application. So again, the addition of, of these homes to this particular property, again, are, the zoning code permits it. And it's not that we're asking for anything more that the zoning code allows. Again, going back to what I said, the applicant here, we are trying to work with the parameters that are given to us. We do appreciate the suggestion by Mr. Dell with respect to the lot line. And we will make that change. We think we can accomplish that without requiring any type of variances. So again, I'm sorry for being fast here, but I know you have a busy night. I'm just trying to get as many of the concerns that, that I have in my notes. I'm going to turn it over to Steve. Do you have anything else that you, you think that I want, that I missed that I should raise or address?
No, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, you covered everything. The board has any other?
No, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, you covered everything. The board has any other questions, I promise.
That's all I have. And I, again, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, we, we would appreciate, um, an approval. If not, um, if, if, if we're gonna be continued to the next meeting, we just ask that hopefully the board would consider it, uh, at the next meeting. Again, we've addressed a lot of the concerns between the last meeting and tonight, and we would hope, uh, we would have satisfied the, the board's concerns. I see Mr. Dell's hand is up, so I will stop speaking and, uh, if the board has any questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Mr. Dell?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Can you please, um, coordinate this with Ms. Laban? I'm sure she knows what we're looking for, and then it won't be any, uh, issue at all. Ms. Laban, you don't have any problem with that, do you? Regarding the lot line, uh, configuration?
Yeah, I don't think that that's in my purview to make that determination. If they're going to change a lot line, the board has to review it.
Is there any way we can do this in such a way that, uh, you can say that those changes are gonna be made, and if they can't, then you come back to us? Would that be okay? I'd ask the applicant that.
I, I, I think you had two comments that I had jotted down here. The first one about shifting the setbacks on lot four. I, originally, we had said, doing a mirror image, I, I think I'm, maybe I wrote it down wrong, but shifting the 20-yard setback, making that the 10, I'm agreeable to that. That's fine. I can make that change. Uh, I don't want to say yes or no to moving the lot lines around without knowing if the square footages would work out, so I would review it, but I, I can't commit to it yet.
Well, if they change the lot, lot line, they're gonna have to come back for that change, correct? So.
I, I, I don't really see any reason for them to change the lot lines.
Yeah, I don't even.
I mean, to make any difference at all, subdivision. Shifting the house. You wanna shift the, if you're gonna shift the house, the lot lines on the house, do you want to shift the garage over too? That's, that's my, that's my question, so. On lot number four.
Yeah, I think that.
As the applicant was talking of mirror image, you know, to flip it, you know, that might make more sense based on what I heard tonight, but, you know.
Okay, Mr. Dell, I think that would, would satisfy you in respect to just moving the, uh, the house on lot four without going through.
Satisfy part of it. The other is the irregular shaped lot.
I understand that, but.
Would like to know what the other board members.
It's still gonna be a regular shape, no matter what you do. Shape, Bob, come on.
Mr. Dell, lot line, the lot shapes are basically gonna stay the same. It's not gonna accomplish anything. I think what you wanted to do in respect to giving lot four more room won't work, but by moving the house, we'll do what you want it to do.
We'll do part of it, yes, not all of it. And again, it's part of the, uh, purview and the responsibility of the board to keep from irregular lot shapes from occurring. And that's definitely in the code, and this simple change would take care of that. But I'd like to know what the other members feel, who are gonna be voting on this tonight.
Okay, I'll go down. Mr. Mr. Young, do, are, would you like to have them come back for the lot line change? Mr. Young, I agree. Mr. Young?
I don't, I don't think it's needed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mandel? Mr. Mandel?
Yeah, here I am. Uh, if it could be done easily, you know, I have no objection to, to, uh, to Mr., uh, the suggestion about, uh, moving the lot line, but either way is fine.
Okay, uh, okay. Sweeney?
I understand what Mr. Dell was saying, that moving that lot line north a little few feet would get rid of that strange little micro corner there. It would still be an odd shaped lot, wouldn't have that irregularity to it. Um, I can only, I will say that I'm not comfortable making it an option where if it could happen, great. If not, I think if it's gonna be changed, they'd have to come back for an approval. I don't think I can approve it without knowing when I'm approving it.
If they changed the lot lines, they have to go back for the change of the lot line. Do we want them to come back just for that?
I thought Mr. Dell was saying, could there be a way to word it where if they can change it, it's fine. If not, then something else, and I don't think we can do that. I think either we approve the plan we see in front of us, or they come back with a different plan. And it is.
Mr. Chair, i- i- it's, uh, the applicant. I'm sorry, i- i- if, if it's possible, I know you're going through the board, but, you know, in terms of, the more I think about it, i- if there's a way to maybe do something with lot four without shifting the lines, again, it just, you know, w- we're trying to avoid having to come back to your board and having to go through another plat. So again, I understand, uh, the comment, but if there's a way to not have to change the lot lines, obviously that would be the preferred approach with, with the applicant. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews, do you want them to come back for the lot line change?
No, I'd leave it the way it is.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I don't see the reason why we had to rush this through. If, if the lot line change makes it better for the neighbors, I'm all for that. You know, there's no reason to rush this for some reason. And so let's get this right before the whole place is overdeveloped.
All right, Mr. Bond?
Mr. Chairman, yes, can I ask the town attorney what he has to say about this?
Okay, well, let me, let me finish to see what Mr. Bond has to say. Okay, Mr. Bond?
The lot line change on, uh, what is it, one and three, ha- ha- it has no impact on anybody. I mean, it doesn't even, and, and to me, it doesn't even make a lot of sense. Why, why we've been talking about that? What makes more sense is on lot number four, that we, uh, flip the side yards and possibly flip the driveway. That's what I got out of what I heard tonight from the public. The guy who, who lives next door on Herring and the people across the way, it sounded like they were looking to have the driveway flipped also. So the applicant had mentioned about a mirror image. That's probably the way to go, you know, and, uh, and flip, do both, flip the driveway and the lot line. And the, uh, this, the side yards, I should say. So the other, the other doesn't mean anything to anybody, you know?
Okay. Uh, in respect to flipping the house, I think what, what Mr. Dell was looking to do was keep the house exactly the way it is, but moving it, uh, 10 feet north, so that it.
Right, well, what I got about, what I got out of what the, what the, but Tom, what I got out of what the people were saying tonight, or, uh, specifically those two people, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I thought they, I thought they were looking to have the driveway flipped also. That would be a better, better for both of them. It would be, the driveway wouldn't be that close to the guy's house on the, uh, on the south side. Or on the, on, as you're facing the lot to the left of this house, and across the street, it wouldn't be like, uh, uh, as opposite. That's what I thought they were looking to do, but I could be, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I thought they wanted, so.
Okay, uh, okay, I thought the other way around. Mr. Dell?
Yes, sir.
What were you looking to do? You're looking to move the house north 10 feet in the same configuration it is now, or to flip the house and move it 10 feet north?
Well, since the, uh, applicant pointed out that right now, it's, you drive the, uh, garage sits closest to the house. If it was completely mirrored, that might be a problem for them because then be looking at the whole side of a house rather than just, uh, the side of a garage. The other thing I would like to have done is I would just like to have a determination made by the town attorney as to whether or not this type of change would need another hearing, you know, because, all right, then I would probably go along with the board, but if it doesn't, that's something else. So can I refer this to, uh, our town attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, um, it would be my opinion that something like a lot line change, that probably should require them coming back. Uh, if it's a minor, a minor thing, uh, I think you could do that as a condition. But conditioning a lot line change, that I don't think anyone really knows how the numbers are gonna come out if that's done. I think that would require them to come back. Let me also comment on something else. A lot of the comments of the public and even the board members relates to things that would normally come up more appropriately in a site plan approval. Uh, Mr. Scheretta was correct when he said, under our code, um, there would not have to be a site plan approval for these individual houses. But as, uh, I believe Ms. Slavin had said at the last meeting, um, one way to resolve a lot of the issues that you've just been talking about is to require, this board can require that the, um, individual houses, when they're developed, come back for site plan approval. In that way, there was a question about a basement, there's questions about the driveways and stuff like that. That, all the, and are the houses going to fit in? Right now, this is subdivision review, so there's no requirement that the exact house be presented. Uh, but if this board requires site plan approval, the exact house with precise, it's gonna have to be spelled out in complete detail. And then the board can decide whether that house fits in to the community. Um, so that's one way to address, to give perhaps preliminary and, uh, make sure that those issues are not forgotten in the future, that they don't get addressed. That when the houses are ready to be built, they're gonna come back, and the public can again come and say, well, we don't like the way this house fits in. So, um, that is another option, this board, if they're inclined to give, uh, preliminary today, that can require that the individual houses come back for site plan approval.
Can I, can I just address that, uh, if it's same as the chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and, and, and thank you, Rick. Uh, my, my only concern there, again, as long as, I guess, I've been doing, I, I have not been aware, and, and again, of a subdivision that's required that because I know your code and I know requires, does not require site plan approval. And I'm not aware of a situation where that was conditioned for any other subdivision, at least in my recent memory, um, in, in Orange Town, and I just don't think i- it would be, uh, I guess, fair for this applicant to have, to have that type of a condition posed, uh, on this subdivision. So again, I don't recall that ever happening. Um, again.
It has happened a number of times. And I believe it, I believe in a number of times.
Yeah, I just don't recall that, Rick, so, again, I'm sorry, but I, I don't recall having a subdivision, uh, that, that requires that, you know, I know we have to go to Akerbor, there's no question, we have to go with the design of the home, and I, and I think that was sufficient to cover the character of these homes. So again, to require, I just think it's an undue burden on the applicant when your code specifically states, we don't require a site plan for single or two family homes. So we have an RG zone, it's a single fam- single family homes here. Uh, we're not looking for variances on these, so, you know, we have to go to Akerbor, and I think that, that's, uh, more than enough and, and fair for this applicant, uh, with respect to this subdivision.
Okay, what's up?
Thank you, Mr. Scheretta, but it's up to the planning board. If they think that's fair, that's fine. You don't have to come back.
I'll defer to Jane on that one. She, she, she probably knows better than me, but just, just speaking from recent memory, that's all.
Okay. If I could speak, if I could speak as an individual member of the board, that was a question I asked last time, and Jane did give that answer. And, um, I was gonna suggest we make that a condition, so I'm glad, Rick, you brought that up, because I don't think I can vote for a this, you know, so, site plan without having the ability to know exactly what the house is on the property gonna look like, so I think it is important for the planning board to take that extra step in this, in this situation to look at the houses individually as they're proposed. That's just my opinion. That's something that I talked about last time. I would, I would like to see that condition if we, if we do put this forward for preliminary approval.
May I just ask, uh, if I could ask either the town, the, the deputy town attorney or the building inspector, does it provision in, in the code that, that allows for those, that condition with respect to site plan? For the mandate site plan for individual homes? So I just want to make sure.
I would say as the legal advisor to this board, the board has inherent authority to give a condition against the, our, our, our. So I, I think it has, has done so.
Again, I'm just inquiring as to the base in the code, because again, I, I was just reading the code and I didn't see that, didn't see that there, so that, that's why I was asking.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know where we are right now. Do we want to allow, well, first of all, in, they want to go back to Akerbor and to s- see what house they want to put per lot. In order to do that, we have to allow them to continue. For us to see the house, we have to see what Akerbor approves. So it's kind of a catch 22. Um, do we give them preliminary? Jane, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the houses at this point are not designed and have not been submitted. It would be going to Akerbor at this point for the subdivision.
Okay, so the house per se is a new point right now. So, so do we want to move on with the subdivision and allow them go ahead and get the subdivision approved? And then come back to both us and to Akerbor? They gotta come back to us anyway. But to come back to us and possibly they'll have some type of house that we can look at, or some approval from Akerbor?
Right, so again, their next step would, if the board grants preliminary, they have to go to Akerbor for the subdivision.
Right.
Then they would come, come back to you for final.
For the subdivision.
In that time, it is not typical that the houses are necessarily designed. Now, some applicants have it all worked out and they know the houses they want to build. But if not, a regular standard subdivision would just go through, and then each lot comes back in as a separate application showing the proposed house. And that, and the detailed planning, planting goes to Akerbor for each individual lot.
Okay, does members of the board, uh, uh, understand that? So what we're gonna do is we're, if we do go forward, allow them to go forward, we're, we're just approving the subdivision, which is basically a lot line. Okay, if the board is, Mr. McQuarrie?
Mr. Fox? Sorry, I just wanted to, just before you continue on, are we gonna address, uh, Mr. Sweeney's condition that the individual lots come back to the board as, as part of a condition for this approval? Because, uh, I don't know if you wanted to poll the members, but we've done it in the past. I think if we're gonna allow the development of this small dead end block, the least we can do is give approval to each individual house, just to make sure that it does, it is harmonious with the property, you know, so if we're gonna allow it, we should, we should follow up on it and, and make sure it's done right. So I, I agree with Mr. Sweeney and, uh, town attorney's suggestion that it should come back to us to make sure we get a.
Okay, uh, Rick, can we do that? Make that as a condition, that they come back for each lot?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I, I just want to make a comment in respect.
You're gonna poll the board on that? I'm not voting, but I promise you'll poll the board on that, so.
Tom?
Oh, you probably just do that.
Quick question. All right, let me, let me poll the board then. Mr. Mr. Young? Um, do you want to go ahead and, uh, allow them preliminary with the condition that, uh, when they do have a house that wants to be built, that they come back for the lot, for each individual lot?
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mandel?
Totally in agreement, they should come back. It's one of the conditions.
Okay, for each individual lot. Thank you. Mr. Sweeney, you, you made the concern, so I assume you're okay with that.
I'm very, very okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dell?
Hello? Yes, I would agree that I still feel strongly about the lot. But being that the houses will be coming back, I think that satisfies most of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. Mr. Andrews?
Hello?
Somebody's asking for a question. I look what it's.
Yeah, Sean Sullivan, how you doing?
Who's, who, who is this?
How wide is? Uh, Sean Sullivan, how you doing?
I think, how are you relating to this application?
Questions closed.
No, I, I just, I'm zooming in and I have a question.
Well, the public session is closed, I'm sorry.
No, I, I'm a, I'm a resident, and how wide is the street?
Sir, sir, the public session is closed. They will be back at any time, and at that time, you could ask your question.
No, but my question is how wide is the street? 15 feet?
Sir, sir, you didn't understand what I said. The public session is closed, and that, when they come back at the next level of application, you can bring up.
It's a simple question. You had other people, you had other people extending their questions. Yes or no?
Sir.
I was watching them all along. How wide is the street? Fifteen feet?
Sir, it's over, man. Come on.
I don't care. How wide is the street?
Fifteen feet, okay? Now that's it. Goodbye. I'm sorry.
How wide is the fire truck? How wide is a fire truck?
Okay, sir, there are rules and laws that the planning board must, um, excuse me, excuse me. The public.
How wide is a fire truck and how wide is a car? Sir, how wide is a fire truck to get up there?
To save.
Can he be muted?
I can't, I I have muted him, he keeps muting.
Sir. Mr. Andrews. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Them coming back with individual site plans.
Um, I would agree to that, providing that.
Go ahead.
After tonight's vote on a.
The fire truck.
That we don't change any sight lines.
There is no safety.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCray, you agree to have them come back for each individual app? Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Eight feet in the cars, over fifteen feet. Kiss my ass, I don't give a shit. You have every right to protect yourselves, all right? Eight feet wide is a fire truck.
Sir.
And what are?
Sir, excuse me.
I'm not gonna kiss your ass. There is humans living on that street with kids. I guarantee you, if my kid looks on that street, how wide is a fire truck?
Sir.
How wide is a car?
Chairman, let's, I I I believe the fire.
Hit my ass.
Inspectors have commented on this, have they not?
Yes, they have.
Okay, so we've.
How wide the street is, they have said how wide the garbage trucks are, they have said how wide the cars are, they have said how wide the fire trucks are, they said how wide the buses are. The only thing they haven't said is how wide the bicycles are, and I believe they are two feet. So, sir, if that satisfies you, please do not interrupt.
He's gone, he left.
All right. Okay, and Mr. Bond, you wanna see them come back for each individual lot?
I I don't necessarily see the need for that, but, you know, I'm not voting tonight.
Okay, the rest of the board wishes that to happen, so, okay, basically, the entire board wishes the applicant to come back with each individual lot as it's, as it's being developed.
Mr. Chair, that's, that's, we, just the only uh, one suggestion there. Um, I'm assuming that hopefully as a condition or preliminary, we're gonna go to fi- to Akabor after, assuming we have preliminary. The one, one suggestion I would make is because the site plans will be pretty much exactly the same, would it be as another compromise to just have all the house plans go at once to Akabor? So everyone can see that the 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 house plans are pretty much exactly the same and consistent with the neighborhood? Just uh, just to throw it out there. Uh, as opposed to having, as opposed to having each house go individually for site plan approval? Again, you know, the the client anticipated that he didn't have to go to site plan, so as an alternative, make a condition that as part of preliminary, we have to go, or and final, for final site plan, we have to take all the homes and go to Akabor at once for all of them. So that way, the neighborhood, the boards can see exactly the, what the what the neighborhood's gonna look like with these proposed homes.
I I would suggest that rather it makes sense for the subdivision to waive Akabor for the subdivision and require Akabor for that plan. That seems to make much more sense, because what's Akabor gonna be looking at? No short plans at this point. We're gonna be getting real plans in the future. That's when Akabor and everyone should really be concerned. Akabor is really not gonna have much to comment on. So it probably makes sense to wave back a war for the subdivision review. And then it will be looked at more particularly when you have real plans before you.
But they could go to all three, they could go for all three houses to Akabor at the same time.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I I I would agree with with Rick's comment. I mean, I I agree that if we can waive Akabor, we can do as you proposed with the chairman and members of the board. And that, 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 we would agree to that.
Okay, um, I think that's probably a very good idea and and should set a lot of groundwork. Um, let me go ahead and ask uh, for a motion on lead agent.
Eight feet.
Motion for lead agency.
Does that mean?
Mr. Mandell, do I have a second on lead agent? Mr. Young seconds lead agent. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? Okay, fine, thank you. May I have a motion for a neg deck?
Motion for neg deck, Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for neg deck. May I have a motion, a second on the neg deck? Do I have a second?
Mr. Young has given you a second.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Young seconds. Okay, fine. All in favor? Aye. Seeing no opposition. Okay, uh, can I have a motion for preliminary with conditions?
Young. Motion for preliminary with conditions.
Okay, um, the first motion I'm gonna run by the board is that the board waivers them to go to Akabor in respect to the site plan.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, thank you very much, subdivision. That the board waivers the applicant to go to uh, Akabor for the subdivision plan. Is there a problem with that? Okay, so, okay, uh, let me go down the list now. Uh, you had Jane Slaven is December seventh and December eighth, both have two. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering. Um, December eighth has fourteen and January twelfth has twelve. Booker Engineering, December eighth has eight. Booker Engineering, January eleventh has five. Rockland County Drainage Agency, November sixth, it's a notation. Uh, Rockland County Sewer District Number One, dated December second, has two. Town of Orange Town Parks and Recreation, December eighth, has one. And I believe that's all, other than the letters that we've already read in. Cheryl's or anything else? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dell has a comment.
Hold on. Mr. Dell, you have a comment?
Yes, that also in lot number four, the uh, house location is to move ten feet in a northbound direction.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in respect to.
And also.
Mr. Bond, talking about flipping it, um, if, Mr. Bond, if you look at the driveway, that the house below lot number four, their driveway is on the north hand side. But if we left the house in the same configuration, the driveways would be adjacent to each other versus flipping it so the driveway is on the other side.
Mr. Chairman, we're not even talking about the houses right now, and that's my.
I understand.
And that's my, and that's my comment for.
They're gonna come back for that.
Another condition, I think, I think we need to make the condition that they have to come back for the slight site plan approval for each lot as the house gets proposed.
Okay.
Too many, you should change it here, Mr. Chairman.
And you put a fire truck up there.
Mr. Chairman, we have.
Then you put a fire truck up there.
On the site plan approval because of the fact that's what we're voting on. So if we're. And it, what the hell, if we're, it, Mr. Chairman, if we're going to move the house up and we're going to move the driveway up, it should be on the site plan approval that we're we're voting on it tonight.
If my house is burning.
God almighty.
Sir, I hate to say how arrogant you are. It is really not necessary. Um, yeah, I I I just, I can't forget any work.
My kid is burning.
Chairman, instead of arguing with him, just inform him that this has been looked at by the fire inspector and it's been approved, or there there's been no. It's it's inappropriate, we just resolve the matter, it's matter by telling him that's been looked at.
Mr. Chairman.
Tell me, tell us as citizens that live on the street.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Mr. Dell, uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mandell.
Okay, if we're going to vote on a site plan, when they come back, a final site plan, we have to have the changes in there. So if we're changing the, if we're changing the house by moving it ten feet to the north and we're gonna move the driveway too, we should vote on it as part of the site plan. Because it's several things to be in the file, in our final, uh, when they come back for final approval, the. This one is the.
You're gonna be it.
What I, what I think I should ask the applicant to do is just.
Fire truck and a car fit both ways.
Get out the way it is and just move it ten feet, but leave it in the same, it's.
Fifteen feet wide?
Now.
Okay, so. Because I hate to say it, we have an idiot on the, on the young thing here.
You're the ones that are idiots. You don't care about the.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say something? Mr. Sullivan or Sully, can you listen to me? Don't interrupt me. Um, this was forward, am I correct, Jane, that this was forwarded to the fire inspector?
I can give crucial comments. Kick your ass. My family and my citizens come first.
Jane, did the. Comment on this, Cheryl, or?
Subdivisions everywhere, go suck.
Okay, in answer.
You're old.
Mr. Sully, you are being, yes, but you're being rude and you're using foul language. I will dismiss you from the meeting. Please be. Please be civil. No one is being disrespectful.
Already, you should have bagged him already.
Hey, a lot of sex.
This guy is, mute him, get rid of him.
Get rid of him.
It's ridiculous.
I did, but he can't call back in. He he can't call back in, so I, you know, he's gonna have to move on.
This, this is, I mean, is, there's a lot of people here who have been extremely civil and who are informative and want information, and they have done it the correct way. And I applaud all of you, and I am very sorry that we've had one individual disrupt us like this. Uh, this normally does not happen, and I do sincerely apologize. Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman.
I wanna apologize. I didn't vote for you. You are scum.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mandell again.
Missed him again, I don't.
Okay, so as a condition, when they come back for the final, the house on lot number four is gonna be moved ten feet to the north. Uh, number two, uh, the note on the site plan in the northwest corner talking about abrevieties is gonna be changed or amended to say green giant abrevieties. Uh, the next thing would be that on lot number two, the driveway is being changed from Haring Avenue to Kings Highway.
Please don't apologize. You guys are a bunch of.
And uh, number five would be that they will return for site plan approval for each of the sites. And the last thing was, they had talked about planting the trees on a berm, was that uh, to help with the flow of water?
I don't remember anything's being said about a berm.
One of them mentioned the berm.
I think somebody was mentioning saying.
No, there was nothing mentioned about a berm. Nobody mentioned a berm.
There were just a lot of things said, we do certain things.
Yeah, no, it's.
There was not the berm, the berm was mentioned by one of the the residents, uh, we we did not agree.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me put it in as an option. Just said, yeah, the applicant has the option of adding a berm. Didn't want me to say that. That's simple.
Okay, it's it's.
He mentioned a wall, he didn't mention a berm. I don't have a problem with a berm.
He mentioned a berm. The applicant has an option.
He definitely mentioned the berm. He definitely mentioned the berm.
We gotta, listen, we've been on this for two hours, we gotta move on with this a little bit. Let's get the conditions down so that the applicant knows what he has to do. Uh, Mr. Mandell, do you have anything else?
No, those are the six conditions that we spoke about during the whole thing. Everybody agreed to. The only thing was that the plant trees on a berm would be an option. But the other five were in there, wave Akabor, move the driveway lot number two from Haring Avenue to Kings Highway. On the note on the plot plans on page two, the note in the northwest corner would change it from this abreviatey to green giant abrevieties. And number four uh, would be to move in that house ten feet uh, to the north. Uh, return for site plan approval, and the last thing was plant trees on a berm would be an option.
Okay, is the, is the board happy with that? Anything else?
That's all I have.
Can I have a second, please?
Andrew seconds.
Andrew seconds. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, sir, you got your preliminary. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you. Just question, question, Mr. Chairman, I know we we waived Akabor.
Would that mean I have to come back here for final, even though I don't have to go back to Akabor for subdivision against?
Mr. Schreiter, that's a question.
Yes.
I was thinking the same thing, since they don't have to go to Akabor, why can't you?
Final.
Final.
Well, finally, the same condition, right?
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next, PB.
No, Mr. Chairman, can we, I I think the question.
Go ahead.
No, since we are not going to Akabor for subdivision, that was waived. I don't think there's anything preventing us from obtaining final this evening with the conditions that have been imposed this evening by the board. That's all I was getting at.
No.
Good, um, Ms. Slaven?
No.
I think there's quite a bit that has to be addressed. The biggest thing is, okay, we we're not because uh, Mr. Peters is concerned with the um, um.
The perk?
The protest. You're gonna have to resolve that before we can give a final.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want a clarification on that.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, have a good evening. Good luck. Okay, next is uh, St. Aiden Site Plan PB twenty-one dash oh one.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a five minute break, sir?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Um, I have to apologize to everybody for that. I I wouldn't call him a gentleman, but that person.
Stop talking about me, please. I'm professional. I have every right to talk about the citizen.
Not to be disrespectful, pal. Not to be disrespectful.
Don't be embarrassed, it's okay. It's okay, talk like a man, me, because if I live on that.
Buddy, you're the one embarrassing yourself. Keep talking, man.
One eighty-two Airheart Road, you can come visit me, okay? You wanna talk about this like a man or no? You wanna sit behind your desk? And stop unmute, stop muting me, all right? I have more education than you, pal. So let's talk like a man, all right? And stop unmuting me, all right? Please? I have more education than you, probably. So let's talk. Do you wanna talk or no? You're ruining this county by building subdivisions and this and that on top of each other. Why? Why? I'm just asking a question, am I being?
Hey, I only have so much control, I can't lock the meeting because it's a public meeting, so he may keep coming on.
We'll do what we can do. It's just a shame that he has, this this person, like I said, I can't call him a gentleman. This person has no respect for anybody else.
Yes, I.
Oh, God. So, do we have everybody back, Mr. Chairman?
Um, is everybody back? Anybody that's not here, speak up. Okay, Saints. Um. PB 21 dash 01. Anybody here from St. Aiden's?
Yes, good evening. Uh, Michael Stein, President of Hudson Engineering, with the engineers' record for the project.
Hello, sir. Uh, explain your project, please.
Sure. Is it okay if I, um, I post up to screen the drawings or?
Yeah, if you want, sure. I think Ms. Slaven has to make you, give you some trouble or whatever she does her little magic button.
You are now the presenter.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, again, so good evening, Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering. Um, the project at St. Aiden's, uh, originally began as a pavement replacement. Uh, the, the arch diocese has brought us out and we to evaluate the current condition of the pavement. Um, and we found that it was significantly deficient, cracking, breaking, um, and looking at replacing the, the pavement itself. Basically, in the same exact footprint as the existing pavement. There was no increase, uh, no modifications. However, as we're further reviewing the conditions of the pavement, we, we noted that the pipes that we could observe were corrugated metal pipes and many of them dating back 40, 50 years. Um, we saw deterioration in, in the connection points, and so we, it, the, the project became expanded to include replacement of the piping. Um, we had gone, a- as we're looking at it, replacing the piping, we're going back between the survey and the historic documents that we were able to obtain to see just the progression of completion of the drainage work, because the various components of the, the church and rectory hall and, and, um, and education building were basically built at different, at different times. So with that, with that being considered, the layout of the drainage system really wasn't, it was basically trying to bring everything to the same point, which in this drawing, it's, it's the manhole right in here on the driveway. Everything basically got directed to that point where then it would drain off, uh, to, to the catch bases in the street over at this point. Uh, the yellow in this drawing, where I, which I highlighted, shows you the path. Um, this is where the head wall is, taking water from off the property. It brings it to, to, it brought it to an existing catch basin here, which then brought it down, and to this point, um, where, where it then leave as a 24. Um, on the other side of the parking lot, the drainage came down and was brought in to that same point. Again, you would be, you basically had a redundancy of these pipes coming through. These pipes were 15 inch leading over. Uh, over on this side, you had varying pipe sizes. The pipe actually entering in from the head wall was a 24, but it varied in size coming through. Um, so in looking, looking at the project, we are, we, and being that we're trying to be most efficient, what we, we have revised the design to include it to come replace these lines here and follow a new path where they would merge and then merge at this point and then be brought down to the same point, to the same point leaving. We, we, uh, fast running ahead, we had gotten into construction. Um, and during construction, we had received a stop work order. We had started the work to doing the drainage replacement. Um, and it's, we received a stop work order for doing the work, and with that being said, we, I, I initially checked with the town. I had pulled up about saying, hey, we're, that we're, that we're replacing existing drainage lines, um, not making the specification that, or not specifying that we're not following the same alignment and that we're modifying the alignment. Um, so they initially, they, they had told me at that point, if you're replacing in kind, you don't need a permit, not understanding that we would need to come in before the planning board. That's why we received a stop work, work order, and hence, uh, we're, we're here now presenting with part of the work being done. Um, we've, during, we, this was just before Thanksgiving of 2019. Um, from that point, we had met with, uh, town staff to review what the, the town would be looking for. Uh, we had also gone through a meeting with engineering department staff, uh, submitting, we, we submitted an overall drainage study looking at the properties from the off-site, not just the, the property lines of our property, but the entire tributary area leading down, both in the existing or the pre-existing conditions that existed with the drainage system before we did any replacement and then in the proposed conditions. Um, we wanted to, we want to be able to sit down with engineering and basically address the, the bulk of their comments before presenting to this board, so we knew that, that we wouldn't be walking into the board not having, not being in a positive place as far as recommendations from the engineering department. Again, the project overall, we're not increasing the impervious area, uh, of the site. We're not changing the parking lot layout. All the work is basically done, being done in the exact same place, basically as maintenance because the pavement was failing. And we're here this evening to answer any questions. I know we had received several different review memos, um, from different departments as well as the town's, town engine, town's consulting engineer. Again, we're here to answer any questions, and I, I know there were some concerns from neighbors.
Um, may I?
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, let me go through. I don't know where, who, I don't know who's talking. Is the gentleman still talking?
Um, I'm Lisa Lanzaro, and I'd like to speak for, to Michael.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to.
Who, are you, are you, are you part of the application or one of the neighbors?
I'm a neighbor.
Okay, you have to wait until I open up the public session, then you'll be able to speak, okay? Don't go anywhere. Stay right there, but you'll be able to speak, no problem. We just want to let this gentleman finish his presentation. Good. Sir, you done with your presentation?
Uh, yes, sir.
We're all screwed up here today. Michael, you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I was waiting for your, uh, to say you were done. Okay, uh, let me go through the, uh, the comments from our consultants. Jay Slaven, on January 8th. Um, she has three items, one of which is the stop work order as of, uh, November 22nd, 2019. Uh, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, January 12th. He has four. Okay, Booker Engineering, January 11th. The applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drainage can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Church of St. Aiden's site plan be approved for drainage subject to the above project comments, of which there are five. Uh, Rockland County Department of Planning, uh, November 16th. It says, uh, we are returning enclosed application, um, for the Church of St. Aiden's, uh, which appears for the planning board on January 13th because this parcel is outside of our area jurisdiction. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, dated January 5th. They have two comments. Uh, Mike Betterman from the, uh, Fire Prevention, dated November 10th, 2020. Fire prevention has no comments in regards to this project. I have a memo for lead agent for Orange Town Zoning Board dated December 2nd. I have a memo of Rockland County Highway, designated as lead agent, dated, uh, November 12th, 2020. County Highway, and I have Short EAF. Okay, Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board right now. Mr. Young?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, no, the applicant's trying to do the right thing with this project. Uh, everything seems to be in order, and I don't see any other issues. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
If I, if I can just say one thing, and, and again, I just, I, I forgot to mention this before. When we did receive the stop work order, and I'm just being upfront, I had to have the contractor go back and do some finalization, at least because there was, there was a pipe that was still, that was going into the catch basin, so when it was raining, it wasn't, it wasn't finalized, making the seal to the catch basin, so it was eroding soil, and it was just a concern. So I, I, again, we're, uh, we weren't trying to be duplicitous. We weren't trying to do any, we weren't try, I wasn't trying to ignore, um, Ms. Slaven. I, I was just trying to make sure things got secured, and I, I just want to make sure I at least point that out.
Okay, thank you very much. Good. Mr. Mandell?
Thanks, Chairman. Nothing at this time. I'm waiting to see if any of the neighbors have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sweetie?
Um, thank you, Mr. Stein. I appreciate you explaining the project to us. It makes sense to me now, and, um, it sounds like, like Mr. Young said, trying to do the right thing, and, um, I'll wait to hear what else has to be said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, sir. I just would like a little clarification, if I could, uh, from Ms. Slaven. If she could just give a brief description of why the applicant is here, just to, because we've heard one side, I'd like to hear the building department. Thank you.
I'm not sure what else, yeah, okay, I'm not sure what else I can add, other than they started a rather large drainage project without taking the appropriate permits and approvals. Um, my understanding is, is that someone had gone to the highway department, asked if they needed a permit from highway, and they didn't require a permit from highway because it was all done on a private site. Uh, however, a drainage undertaking of this scope requires a building permit, and in this case, there was changes to, um, locations of catch basins and some pipe sizes, so that had to go through town engineering, which the town has worked with the applicant to try to bring them into compliance for quite some time now, uh, even before they actually made formal application to the planning board. So this has gone through extensive review.
All right, so you're comfortable with this at this time?
I am comfortable that our town engineering department is comfortable with it because it's ultimately their determination.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews?
I have nothing right now. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it looked like the, uh, the drainage was looked at and approved. There's no increase in the impervious area. I got, uh, I got no issues with this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Bond?
I have no issues with it.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to the public now. Uh, anybody who wishes to speak on this, please, uh, chime in and then tell us your name and your address, and then, uh, you have two minutes, three, I'm sorry. Okay, where's that lady that was on here before? Did she go away? I told her not to.
Hey, that's me. I'm Lisa Lanzaro. How are you? Now, I speak once, because I might want to chime back in.
Just one, three minute time, because then, you know, we want to try to keep, keep on things going.
All right, I'm gonna take 30 seconds now, and then I'll take five, 30 seconds maybe later, but listen.
Ah, you got one, you got one shot, one three-minute shot.
I own 186 Airheart Road. It's down in Eastment that Sean Sullivan owns, who is the gentleman that was chiming in, that I do not know personally. Um, and I am concerned about the water on my property that has always been there since we've owned the house. I will tell you, the rumor in Pearl River was it was an ice skating pond, St. Aiden's, prior to it being built in 1966, and then the water would flow over to 186 Airheart, um, and became a wet area. Then to the left of our property, there was three homes built on a flag lot that made the water increase and, increase the water volume on a heavy rain. Um, and so it's, it's like we're stuck in the middle of these two, uh, projects, and we just contain the water. So I'm wondering, where's my recourse for this project? Um, if you have to realign piping and drain it here and drain it there, well, then there must be an initial problem or a underlying problem. And also, who's in charge of cleaning out the pipes? Because the concrete pipe in the back of the house or on the side of the house that's in between the house and St. Aiden's parking lot has never been cleaned out, that I know of, and if it is cleaned out, do you have a history of it?
Correct, and I'm her neighbor. I was the one that was an asshole before.
One at a time, please? Okay, well, well, that's a question we can ask the applicant.
That's a question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should go through all the comments and read.
Yes, I, I agree. I agree. I'm waiting for this lady to continue.
Well, I mean, how many neighbors are there of St. Aiden's? Not a lot.
All right.
St. Aiden's. I am.
Ma- ma'am? What is your concern about this project? We want to move along with this.
I'm concerned about more water on my property that's unexplained, that, you know, prospects to buy my property are turned down by the town because they say, oh, that's a wet area. You can't build on that. And then I send videos of water just, you know, coming onto my property in a heavy rain, and I get laughed at.
Okay, I, I, I don't know where your property is in respect to this application.
I'll show you on, on, uh, Michael Stein's.
Yeah, ma'am?
If I, I can, if I can put up another, um, drawing, I, it'll show the addresses of different properties. That would be helpful, and it shows the, the topography.
Okay, go ahead.
I think Ms. Slaven needs to, uh, give me that privilege again, or I'm not sure.
No, you're still a presenter, Michael. You should be able to do it. You gotta click share screen.
Oh, okay, sorry. This is first, I'm using go, go to meeting. I'm usually using Zoom, so.
Yeah, yeah, you have to click, you have to actually click on the screen image there.
So, uh, this is, um, the, the neighbor's property of 186, 182, and 178 Airheart. This is the, the church's property. Um, the pipe that we're talking about that leaves that head wall is at this point, and the elevation of the ground at the high point in this area is around 277 here. So if anything backs up and overflows, it's gonna overflow down through here, down through the parking lot and come out, whereas her property, this contour up in this area is around 278. There's no water that would back up a- a- as a result of the work that we just done. It is, if the system is capable of handling the same exact flows that were there before.
So what you're saying to me is that the drainage pipes that you're putting in are gonna pick up the water that's coming from her property onto your property and getting rid of it? So there is no chance whatsoever that the water in any way whatsoever could back up onto her property? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of quit not being, not being an asshole, but how about future reference? Can they build housing on that?
We're, we're still talking with this one lady, and let's, let's resolve one thing.
Yeah.
Profanity on, on, on this.
I won't. I apologize for, yes, okay.
Okay. Okay, let's move on now, okay? Who's next?
Yeah, hi, hello, can you hear me?
State your name and address, please.
My name is Patricia Kelly. Address 145 Airheart Road, and I'm right across the street from St. Aiden's.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I'd like to ask one question. I can't, I couldn't access the actual map. So all the property, I want this to say names, corner house, one, uh, falling terrace in Airheart. So all the, the, the grass area that's on the, uh, the east side of St. Aiden's, they're not making a parking lot out of that, are they? Because I can't access your, the, the, the map to, to show all the plants.
They're, all they are is correcting their drainage. They're not making a parking lot.
Well, here's my thing with this drainage. When they built the extension. Well, here's my thing with this drainage. When they built the extension to St. Aden's, the building for the CCD program several years ago, okay, after that was done, I got more water in my basement. That's number one. Number two, on Airheart Road on St. Aden's side, they took all those trees away. Okay? Everything has sunk and now with the water, it stays. It actually gets stagnant and it actually freezes and it goes out onto Airheart Road. So not only do I get a little extra water in my basement, we also have to be concerned with the freezing on the east side. People going up and down Airheart Road, going towards town line, tuning ice. And they've been spinning. We have a problem here, especially where there, there is a drainage for the sewer and, and/or to the, um, uh, to the, whatever that, the, the, the ponds, you know, we, you know, I suppose. That, that has sunk also on St. Aden's side on Airheart Road. So there's a bit of a danger. You know, and again, my concern is, is that I got water once after you did a renovation. I know I'm going to get water again. And I've been there 22 years. And it's something to be considered because just because you think you're changing and helping drainage, you don't get rid of water. You just reroute it somewhere else. And I would appreciate it if it's not rerouted back into my basement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay. One more time. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
Because I believe I only had, um, one minute of my three.
You have three minutes and we resolved your, your question.
Right. Not three minutes. I had three times to speak at 10 seconds each. Let me ask you something. The concrete pipe that is behind my house is about a foot off the ground, which means soil has been, erosion has happened naturally. So naturally, maybe my house is a little bit higher. And it's flowing onto St. Aden's. That's not true. That's not the way it's always been.
Okay. I'll have the, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know. It's, if, is the pipe on your property?
I believe so. I believe it's right there. If you follow the 280 line.
Michael, do you know?
I, I also want my initial question answered. Who cleans out that pipe? Does anybody, is it, you know, is it like wastewater? Is it, uh, backflow? What is it? Whose responsibility is that?
I have no idea. Yeah. You have to take that up to the building department.
You guys aren't neighbors? You guys aren't neighbors in the same building? You guys don't work together?
No, I agree with Lisa. It, it's like, almost like wetlands. It goes into like, there's like a whole, it used to be a pond. It isn't. I believe. And there used to be like a pond. And now all of a sudden they, they made drainage, grew the properties in the back and then it just rains into there. And now it backs up. It's almost like.
I'm just making sure that Michael Stein, are you there, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. That you know the history of the land and our neighbor at 173 Airheart, who's flooding, her basement gets flooded. Just listen to what we're saying. Maybe you don't know the history of the whole area. So when you're looking at elevations and water tables and whatnot, um, right now it might make sense, but we know what happens when there's a heavy rain or, um, you know, there's no sun out, no, and the water's not drying. It's just pooling in our yards.
Okay.
Against St. Aden's making the parking lot beautiful. Oh my, you know what? I'll shut myself off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. The, the applicant knows that he's, there's a concern over there. Uh, Michael, please, uh, uh, address it. Um, I, I, I don't know what else, what else to say. Um, if the pipe is off your property, I don't know what you can do. I don't know who cleans the property, uh, the pipe. I don't know. I think you have to take that up with the town. I don't know. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm being mature now. I might be an issue, but it used to be a pond before they made, uh, St. Aden's.
Okay. What's your name and your address, please?
Yes. I'm Sean Solv and I was an asshole before 182 Airheart Road. But I live right behind there and, um, it used to be a pond. And there were people that I know skated there before. It's a low lying area and everything flowed into there and they, they had extra drainage and that, that was it, you know? And now it's back flooding through that. And that was it. So I apologize. Before I was an asshole, I apologize now, but yeah, that, that's what happened.
You can, you can stop using those words, please. Thank you very much. There's, you might use it at home. There's ladies here and I don't appreciate it. Okay. Uh, Michael, you're saying that the property where this lady lives is higher than the parking lot. So there's going to be a natural course of drainage down towards the parking lot, which your, your drainage system is going to pick up. Is that what you're telling? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on this?
Yes, there is.
I signed off. I'm sorry.
Yes, please sign off. Thank you.
No, what'd you say? I can use some language at home? I'm sorry. No, what'd you say before I signed off?
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this comment?
Yes.
Say before I signed off, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah. What'd you say before I signed off? I didn't hear you.
This guy's being a clown again. I, I, I apologize. Uh, we can't get anything done on it.
Sorry. I apologize before I.
I understand. So then go away and you don't have to, you can stop apologizing. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this project?
Yes.
Speak your name and your address, please.
George Lanzaro, 186 Airheart Road.
Yes, sir. What's your concerns?
My, I, I just wanted to give a little clarity on that concrete pipe.
I will come see where you live, Jeff. You clown. What'd you say before I signed off? I just asked that.
The, there are parts of 186 that, uh, the elevation is higher than the parking lot. But down where that, uh, pipe is, it's not even close. I can tell you that from years of erosion. Um, but, um, I can tell you that the pipe is, is actually 100% on church property. It came up during the extension meeting. It is St. Aden's pipe, uh, pipe. And we got the same answer when it came down to, uh, whose responsibility it is to clear out. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this project? Okay. Hearing none, can I have a motion to close the public session? Motion to close the public session?
Don't be scared.
Mr. Young makes a motion to close public session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mandell. All favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. Okay. Public session is.
Jeff, Jeff. Come, come talk to me.
I can't be, this clown won't stop.
I keep dismissing him, but he keeps calling back in. I don't know if he even necessarily realizes. I don't think there's anybody on this call named Jeff. So I don't know who he's speaking to.
I, 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 again, to everybody that's on here, I have to apologize for this guy's rudeness. Uh, it's not right and the language he's using is, is not right. I, I really apologize. Okay. Um, this is in for Jane. Do you have any, any, any problems with this? You said that the applicant has gone through and you sat with them and they were really, um, have gone through and, and they're kind of on the, uh, the track now?
Well, I didn't personally sit with him. He has been working directly with Bruce Peters as well as Candy Gennaro to address their concerns.
Okay. It, it looks like they're.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for, uh, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible that when you change the drainage that you're working on right now, is it possible that it might resolve some of the, uh, water issues, the pooling and stuff like that?
It really wouldn't have any impact on Airheart Road. Uh, the flows leaving our, leaving the, the church property are unchanged. Um, we, from the, the offsite watershed analysis we did, um, and the engineering department concurred, uh, they, they, we had to make one minor, um, change to one of the structures. But the flows leaving were identical to what was pre-existing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank, thank you. Um, personally, I.
What's the purpose then?
I don't really see any more. Um, I, I think they're doing the right thing. Um, I don't know if you should have them come back or just give them final, let them go ahead. Uh, it seems.
What was the one change?
Ms. Slavin, uh, is, is happy with, uh, what's going on. Uh, Bruce Peters seems very happy. They're going to.
We got new information here. What was the change?
I can't believe we're being rudely interrupted.
Not as rude as Sean Sullivan. We're just concerned.
Well, I understand. I mean.
Please shut up. I have every right to be on this. I pay a lot of taxes, pal.
All right. You know what? I, I hate to say this, that I'm tired of this. I've had a rough day. I'm going to leave you folks, everybody. An absolute shame.
I pay a lot of taxes, pal. Part of the people on that small street that's 18 feet wide. That's all I'm saying. And don't disrespect me. I won't disrespect you. All right? That's all I'm saying. Jane.
Now it's me. I guess it's on me now.
The chairman, I just, you know, when, when there's new information, I mean, how do you, how are we supposed to respond? I mean, if there was like, you know, what is the purpose of the, of it? Like, it seems to me that at a great expense and there's no change in water flow. I like, what, what's the purpose of, of a, of a huge, such a, you know?
182 Airheart Road. Please come talk to me. The reason for the improvements, the reason for the improvements to, to respond is because the existing piping was severely corroded because it's corrugated metal pipe. And that only had to service life about 25 to 35 years. And before spending half a million dollars doing pavement replacement, it was determined that replacing the pipes would be of the utmost importance. Prevent those pipes from collapsing and then having to dig up those after it's been paved.
Sounds like it makes perfect sense to me. If that's the reason. You know, if it's not changing where water goes or, or how it ends up getting there, you know, and not going to affect anybody that lives in the area. I'm sorry. I'm speaking out of turn, but like, you know, we're, we're just, we're just concerned because you know what? We've gotten the short end of the stick many times with many decisions coming out of these meetings. And we don't always feel like we're being fairly represented and it kind of gets scoffed off and it's not right. So. Thank you.
Do we lose our chairman?
I believe so.
I think we might have, right?
Yes, we lost two members because of how rude everyone is, is being and not allowing the meeting to continue in a formal manner. So, uh, so far, Mr. Sweeney and the chairman have indicated that they will no longer participate in the meeting if it's going to continue like this.
Ms. Slavin, do we have a vice chairman who can take over so we can finish tonight and at least show courtesy to the remaining, um, applicants? Is, uh, Mr. Young, are you the vice, uh, chairman?
I ref, I refuse to confirm or deny that.
Jane, do Cheryl or Jane, do we know who?
No, that's me, Rick. Rick, it's me. I'll take care of. Okay. Um, so I, I'm sorry, Jane, where do we end off on that? Uh, did we give St. Aden's final approval on this? Let them finish their.
I'm not even sure because I was focusing on trying to keep the people who were speaking out of line under control. I'm not sure if the chairman even closed the public section of the meeting yet.
Jane, I believe the.
He didn't close it.
I, I'm just going to open it one last time. Does anybody else in the public have anything further to add to this project?
Bill, the meeting was closed. The public portion was closed. Uh, you first did, Mandell seconded.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay.
So I believe the chairman was about to read in the conditions. He started to read the, the letters.
Okay. I'm just, uh, probably repeating what, uh, Mr. Warren said. All right. So, wait, I'm sorry. Mr. Warren was reading in the conditions. So we did have a a determination of prelim or?
I believe he was, he was beginning to.
Possibly give it a, a lead in the neck deck and decide whether it was, uh, final.
Okay. Yeah. I believe that's where we ended. So, um, I'll ask the remaining board members, uh, do they have any objection going to final on this? Or should we go to preliminary and let them come back?
I have no problem going to final. I mean, what they're doing is going to help the area. It's going to help, however much it's going to help, it's going to help. So there's no downside to it. So I don't have a problem with going to final.
No objection, Mr. Chairman.
Andrews.
Thank you, Andy.
Yeah. Then, then add in any new structures or impervious areas. The drainage can only help. I'm hearing that there is a problem there. But it seems like this project isn't going to make it worse. You know, they're improving the drainage. So I, I have no issues with, uh, going forward.
I agree, Michael. Uh, Robert?
Final.
Yes, I, I agree with the board members here. Um, unfortunately, the neighboring, uh, properties will have to go to the building department to, uh, express your displeasure of the drainage that's occurring in that area. So, uh, we're, we're going to go forward and, uh, give final to St. Aden's here and let them remedy their problems. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't believe that satisfies, uh, neighboring's, uh, neighbors at this time. So. Who would like to propose final on this?
Mr. Young, maybe first lead agency and neck, neck deck.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. I thought that was done. Lead agency? Uh, can I get a second?
Second, Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Man, Mr. Mandell's seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we have, uh, Young, uh, McCory, Andrew's, Bond, and, uh, Dell. Six and six. Yes. So we'd say, so good. So all favor? Aye. Uh, subject to conditions. We'll go through the conditions, uh, Cheryl?
Motion for neg deck?
I'm sorry. Neg deck. Mr. Mandell, two seconds. Mr. Bond's seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Motion for final conditions, man?
Mr. Bond gives the motion for final with conditions. Can I get a second?
Go through the conditions first before a second?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Andy. It's been a while since I've run a meeting. First letter I have is from, uh, Ms. Slavin with, uh, three conditions. We have a letter from Bruce Peters on January 12th, uh, with four conditions. Brooker Engineering's recommendation for, uh, approval of drainage subject to conditions. Letter from Michael Bettman, uh, fire profession, prevention has no comments on the project. A letter from the Rockland County Planning. Outside of their jurisdiction, they have no issues. Rockland County Sewer with their two comments. Correspondence from Town of Barnstown Zoning Board, Rockland County Highway. Rockland County Highway. Am I missing anything, Cheryl?
That's it.
That's it. I need a second, please.
I'll second it. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Mr. Stein, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everyone.
It's been great already.
It's been entertaining.
Alright, shall we move on?
Yes.
Next project up, we have the Johnston site plan, critical environmental area. PB one dash zero two, final site plan and secret review. With somebody from the Johnston site plan.
Good, good evening, Young. Long evening tonight.
How are you, Mr. Brenner?
Yeah, this is a situation where my clients, the Johnsons, who are here too, and they will be speaking to the board. They came from Nebraska and purchased a very lovely house on Tweed Boulevard. While they were there, they were looking to get some kind of a patio area. And what they started to do is to build a patio on their existing driveway. Not knowing that they had to get certain permits to do this. Therefore, we're here now to try to get approval for this patio. The situation is built on impervious soil, so therefore we really don't have a drainage problem of any sort. It's just a matter that they're building this patio. The patio does come out in front of the building. The architect is here who designed it, that's Ms. Ortiz, I believe. And maybe she wants to explain the project to you, so Ms. Ortiz, if you want to get online right now, maybe you want to explain the project to the board.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me well?
Yes, Ms. Ortiz, just fine.
Okay. So, the, it's a fairly straightforward and simple project. I do have drawings on my screen that I could try to share with you, but basically, I'm gonna try to explain and if needed, I'll illustrate. So, they have an existing driveway and building a deck over the driveway, okay? So all the wood framing and everything, that's, that's on top of the existing concrete driveway. The issue that we had is that the overhanging that deck passed the end of the existing drive by like twelve feet. Hold on, actually, I stand corrected. Six feet and twelve feet is the, the length of the driveway. So, we are only overhanging by six feet. And we have two foundation, concrete foundation tubes going down with two footings into the ground. And that's it. That's the extent of the project. That's very simple.
Okay, so it's six feet that's cantilevered over?
Past the driveway, yes. So there's an existing driveway and then it cantilevers over by six feet. Well, not cantilevers, you know, overhang, but there's two footings, two tubes going into the ground. But that's really, that's all it is.
How much, how, how far down are the footings?
You mean down into the ground?
Well, from the deck to the footings, how much?
What's the length of the foot?
Oh, the height?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know what? I, I don't have that exact height here, hold on.
I couldn't find it on the drawings either.
Yeah, it is, I don't know, hold on. I don't have, Jeff and Suzie, you know, my clients are here, do you guys have that information? How far approximately the height from grade, right there where you have the footings to the, to the-
Just ballpark.
Jeff, you have a go ahead?
I would guess the-
Approximately is coming.
The taller one would be about three feet on the lower side, and on the other side, it's about one foot.
Okay, that's the- You're not, you're not talking like ten, twelve feet, it's-
Oh.
No. No.
Okay, does it encroach into the side yard? In their side yard with-
No, no, it does not. I don't know, you, if you want to see the site plan here. It does not. Actually, we are within all the limits.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. Yeah, I don't need to see it. I'm just asking you a question, so, thank you.
Christiane, I made you a present, presenter, if you can put up the proposed plan on the screen.
Yeah, should I? I have it here. Let me try this. Okay. So, here, this, okay. So obviously, this is Tweed here, that's the, this is the front of the property. This is the driveway, right? So the driveway is long, it goes all the way down, 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 enters to the house, and this is the proposed deck. So, the, the portion that overhangs is really just, you know, this little area here. And twenty-six feet here, this is the side yard, this is, then I have a zone here. So, it was before, it was twenty-six point twenty-five, and so we just moved it a little closer. But, you know, the required is twenty-five feet, so we're within the limits still.
Ma'am, did you see my comments?
No, hold on.
Those dimensions don't seem to be accurate.
Why?
Because if you actually look at where you have the twenty-
Let me up.
Yeah, if you look at where you have your twenty-five foot setback, the proposed deck actually encroaches upon that. And the drawings that were submitted did not scale correctly.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the dimension, though. If the, you know, go by the dimension, what's on the dimension, don't go by this, what's scaling off the drawing.
Well, I understand that, but it's not, ma'am, it's not correct. It's not correct.
So you're, you're saying what, that you guys measured this there and it's not twenty-six feet?
No, what I'm saying is your drawing doesn't represent it properly. If you project your twenty, if you project the twenty-five foot setback straight across, okay, which is the regulation, the deck is drawn, projects past that twenty-five foot setback.
Yeah, what I'm saying is you have to go by what the dimension line says. Because drawings sometimes, you know, they're not, you can't scale off of them.
I understand that, but your drawing graph, ma'am, your drawing graphically is incorrect.
Whether I scale it or not scale it, that, that's not the issue. The drawing itself is graphically incorrect. It does not demonstrate what the dimensions say.
Yeah, well, it might be a little, I understand what you're saying, but what regulates this drawing is the dimension, so just go by that.
Um, no, I can't do that, because visually, graphically, it is incorrect. So, right now, it appears that the deck needs a variance, that's why the board member questioned it.
Uh, well, it, it says twenty-six feet, so it doesn't need a variance. That's what it is.
Jenna, can I speak?
Yeah, in my, my-
Drawing might be incorrectly a little, but that doesn't matter. The dimension is there.
No, no, we want to do this right. Help me understand. We submitted these drawings with the understanding that, that they were to scale and that they were acceptable. So help me understand what we need.
The drawing as presented, that was given to us to review. The deck projects past what would be this required setback line.
Okay.
Jane, do you have, do you have a dimension, Jane?
If everybody would let me finish, please. This is why the other meetings, what, the other previous hearings went awry.
Of course.
Okay, so, the drawing didn't look accurate. Because if I project the twenty-five foot line and intersect it with the deck, the deck projects into the twenty-five foot setback. So, that is the reason for my comment. I went on then, and I said, well, maybe, maybe the twenty-six feet is just written incorrectly. Let me take out a scale, which is the next step. I took out a engineering scale, which I've been, you know, using for about thirty-five years now. And it, the drawing does not scale correctly. So right there, my review has to stop. I cannot make a determination from a drawing that looks graphically incorrect and scales incorrectly. I cannot make a determination on whether or not a variance is required. A drawing must be accurate. So at this point, it's not accurate, so it, it, we, it's not a debate, it's not accurate. I need an accurate drawing presented.
Okay, so you took, basically you took a ruler and you ran over the drawing and you're saying it's not accurate. It might be off by a little bit, we might, but usually a dictation is the dimension. It says there twenty-five feet and twenty-six feet, right? It's, it's there, it's noted.
It's not acceptable.
So that doesn't mean anything?
It, it's not acceptable. I told you the reasons why. If you'd like to contact my office, I can help you further with that. But at this point, the drawing is not accurately reflect. It doesn't match, it doesn't-
No, no, it's totally fine. Listen, I can, I can redraw this and it's probably off by like, you know, thriving.
I think the remedy here is, yeah, needs to ask for continuance and come back and correct the drawing with, get together with Mrs. Slaven, correct the drawing, and then come back. So you need to ask for continuance tonight, because, you know, it's ten-thirty now, we still got some more to go. It's not going anywhere, so that's what needs to happen.
Understood. I'm just trying to figure out how we got to the meeting, how we missed these comments. That's what's confusing me.
Yeah, I never got any of those comments.
We would have corrected it, though.
Exactly, we would have corrected before the meeting, yep.
Okay, can I, can I enter seat for a second? Okay, we will ask for the continuance to correct the drawing, however, there was an item there in your items, Jane, as related to front setback and front yard setback. Because we're gonna be having to go to the zoning board anyway if you find that this on ground level requires a variance. If you're gonna make us go to the zoning board for the variance, then I don't see why we can't proceed and we'll go for the variances that you're looking for. I'm just going from your letter, that's all I'm, I'm trying to-
Donald, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. That is up to the planning board to make a determination whether or not to move something forward. I, again, just noted the inconsistencies in the plan.
Okay, so, am I speaking to the board? There, there may be an error in that which will be corrected, but the director's asking us to go to the zoning board because she's saying because the, the front is being used for this patio, she's requesting that we go to the zoning board to get a variance for the front yard. So what I would like to do, if it's permissible, we will correct the drawing, go to the planning board and get the variances that are necessary. If it turns out that we need that variance for that, we'll add that variance onto the chart for that one foot, and also try to get the variances for the front yard. Am I making myself clear, or maybe I'll start all over again? If you read, if you read Ms. Slaven's letter, you'll see that there are certain things on the drawing that she was having a problem with, and which we will correct, but if you notice, it does say that we may have to need a front yard setback variance. So in order to go to the variance, we can either correct this one item over there. If it's incorrect, we'll correct the drawing and we will go for the variances that are needed as code.
Yes, can I also just say that, you know, I was just checking the dimensions here, and so this site plan was actually, this is not a survey, okay? This site plan, because it was actually, you know, we were told that we didn't need this updated survey. So this site plan was actually developed on, like, top of a survey, as, you know, using the survey as a base. But this is not a, I'm not a surveyor, so this is not a survey.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to correct that and maybe by, I think it's already been laid out. I think we'll have to correct it by a direct measurement.
Yeah, we can correct that. It's not a problem. I'm just saying it's not a legal survey, because it's not done by a surveyor, okay? So all I did was draw a site plan.
Yes, Mr. Dell.
Yeah, I've been doing this, as you know, for like forty years. This is not acceptable, because we don't have a bona fide document to approve. We have nothing that's legal. Any approval that we get could easily be overturned or whatever. We are, we are being asked to, to approve a document that's not legal in terms of accuracy and a number of other things. It should be done, everything mentioned. We should not have to say, well, that's okay, we didn't do this, didn't do that. We deal with professionals all the time, and we, and we expect professionals to give us professional documents now. For whatever reason, that didn't happen this time, and that's not our fault. Give them a continuation, let them come back, and then we'll take a look at it. Because before, until then, we don't really have anything to go on. We just have to think. And so, let them finish it and bring it back to us.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dell.
Alright, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, I am going to request that we continue this so that we can correct the drawings. I just want you to know that. I think that's what the board wants, and I'm recommending that we do that.
What I would suggest on the deck, you just cut it back. You don't need to go for variance. I mean, it doesn't look like I have to cut it back a lot, so I don't see any hardship there in cutting it back so you can eliminate the variance, but that's just me. The deck, the deck is already built. The deck is already built, correct?
No, not, not completely, no.
No.
We began the deck, am I on?
The overhang is not built.
We began the deck and when we understood that we needed to stop, we absolutely did. We want to do this right. We, when we moved here a year and a half ago, we worked with the, the the city of Orange Town, and everything was great. We, we experienced permits and did everything we were supposed to do. This seemed like a very simple thing, and I think it is. I wish someone would come out and look at it. I just want to make sure we're doing it right, and I want to make sure that, that we're getting an understanding of what we're actually being asked to do. It is kind of interesting, because it seems, I guess, coming from a different state, where permits seem to be a lot easier to do. We're not trying to do anything unusual here. We're not trying to get around the rules. We just don't want to know what the rules are and, and want to do it right.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Johnson, and I was at your site yesterday. I was up on the driveway, and that's why I thought the deck was there. My car was parked top of your driveway, they have seen me, so I-
I wish it would have come down, we would have walked through down there.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna go take measurements for you, so you-
No, no.
You have to present the plans correctly, like the board has said, like Ms. Slaven has said, and then resubmit them, then you can go for your variances.
Okay.
Alright.
I think it's a matter of communication, and we just want to do it right, and we're just trying to understand what we need to do, so.
I appreciate that.
So, can I understand, so, so when we do this, we resubmit the drawing and then you'll look at it?
Are we asked to go before another board, or how is this going to work?
Well, you, you need a couple variances from Ms. Slaven's item six.
We didn't get that.
I don't know what that is. We haven't seen that.
And I apologize.
We don't know what that is.
Jane, do we have to go for variances for the front yard as you wrote in your letter?
Yes.
Okay, so I will get the letter to the architect. We will correct the drawings, and we will ask for continuance and come back at the next meeting.
I, I understand.
I have, I'm sorry, I have-
If I could ask Jane what, what that, what that variance is, because I don't want to move forward if this is-
It appears that we may need a variance for the side yard, and it appears we may need a variance for the front yard.
The front yard?
You definitely need a variance for the front yard. And to clarify, it's not that this is a difficult process, it's that the house is in a, a tough location. So we have laws to protect the critical environmental area. It is important that information that's provided is shown correctly and accurately. Donald, I think it might be best if, when the accurate drawing is prepared, if you would like to send me a copy, I can review it, or you make the multiple copies.
Will go, will go.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, can I, can I ask one last question about the drawing? Yes, reviewing a drawing is a great idea. I thought we had already done that. But then, my question is, do we need a survey? Do we need a surveyor to do this, or is it still like a site plan sufficient?
Well, you based your drawing on a survey, didn't you?
I'm sorry?
You based your drawing on a survey?
Yes, but, you know, like, I sort of like drew over the survey, so it's not a survey.
Donald, I think it might be best if we, we can talk about this during the workday.
Right.
And we can get everybody on the same page.
I agree. Alright, so we will ask, we will ask for the continuance, and I will get in touch with you tomorrow, the Johnsons, alright?
Okay, thank you, everyone. I've seen infinite pictures of you tonight, and I appreciate it.
Hi, thank you, good night.
Yeah, good luck to the rest of the meeting.
All right, we will move on to. Who's next? Rockland Car Care, site plan. I'm sorry?
Yeah, this one's me too. This is for the Rockland Homes for Heroes. It's what we're doing.
Are they postponed? No.
No, Rockland Park.
Okay. Who's here for?
The next one is Rockland Homes for Heroes.
Donald, the next one is.
Are they?
Okay.
What do you have in your agenda?
I have Rockland Car Care, then Camp Shanks, Phase Two.
Okay, I'm Camp Shanks, I'm sorry. Next, I'm sorry.
I think the gentleman, yes, go ahead, sir.
Well, good evening, Vice Chair and the Planning Board. My name is Kyle Bargwell from the Chasing Companies. I'm here representing Joe Ianuzzi of Rockland Car Care. Rockland Car Care owns a parcel at the intersection of North Middletown Road and Town Line Road in the town of Orange Town. There's an existing four fueling stations with the gas station convenience store along with ten service bays located at the site. They're looking to put a canopy over the existing fueling stations. The site is a pre-existing non-conforming use for a gas station in the commercial office zoning district. And our applicant is seeking a variance for the front yard setback for the, for the canopy along with a height variance. I'm here tonight to listen to any comments from the board and address any questions I can possibly do as well as hear from the public.
Thank you, Kyle. All right, Rockland Car Care, TB twenty-one dash zero three. All right, you have to mute yourself. Preliminary final site plan. Letter from Jane Slavin. January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Miss Slavin has six comments. Have you reviewed those comments, Kyle?
I, I do not believe I have seen those comments. I received comments for Department of Planning.
I'm, I'm going to read the letter to you, all right?
Sure.
This is an existing non-conforming use of this commercial office zoning district. The property has received the following approvals. You had approvals in two thousand, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen seventy, two thousand five, and two thousand seven. Number two, per chapter forty-three, table three dot eleven, the following variances are required. Front yard required, thirty foot with twenty-seven point three proposed. Canopy height, fourteen point six five with seventeen point five proposed. So those are the two variances that you discussed earlier.
That's correct.
A review will be required. And approval is required. Number four, the signage proposed on, is signage proposed on a canopy? If yes, the drawings must be updated to show the signage in compliance with zoning regulations. Will there be on there?
Yes, so we submitted a canopy elevation the first round, but it wasn't very descriptive on, you know, showing colors and such for, I think it just called out for the size of the Exxon sign. So basically on the canopy, there's going to have the fueling logo. And that's going to shown on three sides of the canopy at two feet by four feet. That's also in the EAF, I believe.
You'll need to show that.
Sure, yeah, we, we can update the elevation to add more detail on the signage.
All right, the short EAF appears to be in order. Number six, the applicant is reminded that no work is permitted and no permit will be issued until all comments are met from the various agencies. All approvals are obtained. The final site plan is stamped by the Chief Clerk to the board and the construction plans are reviewed and approved by the inspector. Okay, I also have a letter from Department Environmental Management and Engineering from Bruce Peters, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. This department has no comments on this project at this time. From Brooker Engineering, January eighth, from Kendi Gennaro. This application provides sufficient information. We therefore recommend Rockland Car Care be approved for drainage subject to conditions. Rockland County Department of Planning, December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Department of Planning has following five recommendations. Any we need to bring to their attention, Jane?
I did see those comments. I think those were kind of in line with Jane's comments as well.
Okay. Moving on, Rockland County Highway Department. Rockland, December tenth, twenty twenty, from Diane Regis, always have problem with that name. They have three comments from Rockland County Highway? Any issues, Kyle?
No, it looks like they're requesting a right-of-way permit. I'm assuming for, you know, trucks entering and exiting the site during construction. I don't see why that would be an issue. I can't.
Recommending, we're serving as lead agency. No significant effects on the county highway right away. Okay, we're good. Rockland County Sewer District One from Joseph Laffiantra. He's got two standard comments there. Shouldn't be an issue. Correspondence from Rockland County Planning. Orange Town ZBA with Planning Boards being lead agency. That's it, Cheryl?
Yes, that's it.
We'll open up to questions to the board. Start with Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, just the just when they prepared their application to land use boards, they forgot to add the signs there too, so they could correct that. I guess they're going to have to prepare copies of the signs before they go to Akabor. So they should be aware of that. One question for Cheryl, did we get a reply from Clarkstown?
I think they were too far away for Clarkstown. They were over five hundred feet.
Okay, is this the I was just reading Rockland County Planning number two. That's the only reason.
Yeah, I think they were incorrect. I think I measured it.
Okay.
I, I don't have to file with them.
All right, I'll go with your measurement. Thank you. No further.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Mr. McCroy?
No questions, as long as you have to give him, realize that he needs those two variances. I got, I got no other questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews?
I'm good with it right now.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question. Why is this proposed to be seventeen point five feet high? If it's that high, you don't get any protection under the canopy. Fourteen is what has always been allowed for have trucks to pass under tractor trailers. Why such a high thing unless you're trying to make it a de facto sign? Because it basically defeats the purpose of having a canopy.
Kyle?
Um, so the architect supplied the elevation for the canopy. I believe that's kind of a standard canopy that they pose on multiple gas stations. I don't think that'd be correct. It would also allow for trucks to move underneath it.
Well, it went at fourteen, four thirteen, six five. I just don't understand it. I mean, what's the point then? It's like having it over your head. Yes, yes, it's like.
I am looking at, they weren't architectural drawings that were supplied in this most recent package. It's actually the steel framing construction drawings for the canopy. And the clearance height to the underside of the canopy proposed is fourteen foot six.
Oh, it is.
Yes, the seventeen foot six inch dimension is to the top, the highest point of the canopy.
Okay, that makes a little more sense. It wasn't clear from what I saw here. Okay, then that, that probably makes sense. And what color is that canopy going to be?
That's another good question, Dell. So what we'll do is we are going to be submitting basically a architectural elevation showing colors.
Fine, you're going to bring it to Akabor then, right?
That's correct, right? I think we have to.
Okay, because sometimes I've seen these, you know, become de facto signs. And that's not really what we're after here. Okay, thank you. You answered my questions.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Bond?
I'm good with that. Place has always been a gas station, so it's, it's no, no big deal to anybody, so.
And it looks much better than the repairs across the street from it, so. All right, we'll open this up to the public. Anybody from the public care to speak to this project?
No, you're doing a good job, man. No public, and it's good.
Don't, don't get used to it. I'm telling you, don't get used to it. Someone, please close the public portion?
Motion to close the public portion, Mr. Mendel.
Mr. Mendel, Mr. Andrew Seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. We are.
Agency.
Motion for lead agency by Mr. Mendel. Can I get a second?
Andrew Second.
Andrew Second, all in favor?
Aye. Motion for Nick Deck.
Mr. Mendel, Nick Deck, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bond Seconds, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, can we go to final on this, Cheryl? No, it's no, it's got to go to Akabor, right?
To Akabor, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go to preliminary. We can't let it, we can't give it final pending.
Subject to going to Akabor, as.
End zoning.
Going to Akabor, right? I, I'm sorry, so can we go to final or not? We can. Okay.
Yes.
All right, we can go to final, subject to conditions that the, to be met at Akabor zoning board.
I'll make a motion for final.
Mr. Bond gives me a final. Conditions. Conditions are Miss Slavin's January twelfth letter with six, six comments. Mr. Peters, one comment from January twelfth. Brooker Engineering on January sixth of twenty twenty-one. Recommendation for approval of drainage. Rockland County Planning on December eighteenth with their five recommendations. Rockland County Highway with their three comments on December tenth of twenty twenty. Rockland County Sewer District One with their two comments on January fifth of this year. Correspondence from Rockland County Planning and Orange Town ZBA. Cheryl?
That's it.
That's it. All right, Kyle, you have file, final subject to the conditions at the ZBA and Akabor. You have no issues there.
Really appreciate it. One, just one question. Do you have to refer us to the ZBA or how do we, how do we get onto into a ZBA meeting?
My, my letter acts as that referral, but you will have to fill out a ZBA application.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Jane.
Sure.
We need a second.
I need a second.
Andrew Seconds.
Mr. Andrew Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Kyle. You're good.
Have a great night, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Murphy. Thank you for waiting. I'm sure, I'm sure you'd seen worse in your time.
He's muted. I don't think he realizes it.
That's all right. He's hearing us.
There he goes. Oh, you just turned it off again, Mr. Murphy.
I was trained in the county legislature to hear many, many strange things.
I appreciate that, sir. All right, Mr. Brenner?
All right, here we go. Project has received planning board approval for preliminary environmental zoning board variances, Akabor approval. We are now here for final approval of the project. And I think if we read the comments and we'll get it moving, okay? And as I have Mr. Kendi Gennaro here, he's going to be here representing the engineer. I will definitely have Mr. Murphy here representing the project.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. Camp Shanks, RHFH Phase Two Site Plan, Planning Board twenty-one dash zero four for final site plan review. Rockland Homes for Heroes. We have correspondence from Slickman with, on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one with two comments. The applicant has addressed the comments from my October fourth, two thousand nineteen letter. Number two, the applicant is reminded that no work is permitted and no permit will be issued until all comments are met from the various agencies. All approvals are obtained. The final site plan is stamped by the Chief Clerk to the board and construction plans are reviewed and approved by the inspector. Correspondence from Department Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, on January twelfth. Mr. Peters has eight comments. Excuse them, Mr. Brenner?
So far, no problem.
Thank you. From Brooker Engineering, Kendi Gennaro, I assume? Is this his engineering letter? Okay.
No, that was probably our narrative response for the submission. Mazur was doing the drainage review for this application.
Yeah, I saw that, Ken. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to read Mazur's letter, right?
Okay. I think if you read the last paragraph, you're you're covered.
All right, Mr. Brenner, overall, the proposed storm water management plan is attempting to provide a greener development existing property, which meets the intent of regulations and therefore we recommend that Camp Shanks RH FH Phase Two Site Plan be approved for drainage subject to the above proper comments. That was dated January eleventh this year. We also had a letter on the sixth from Mazur. It's also a recommendation to approve from Jesse Cokely. I read that wrong?
That's correct. The letter on January eleventh superseded the January sixth letter. It contains the same comments, plus a few extra ones, and we can address all of those comments.
Thank you, Ken. From Rockland County Sewer District Number One, September of two thousand nineteen. Two thousand nineteen, really? Two comments, generic comments. Rockland County Planning on January fourth, twenty twenty. Rockland County Planning has ten comments. Any issues with those comments, Mr. Brenner?
Yeah, we do have one issue with one item. Want to explain that one, Ken?
Sure. It's comment two, and the comment is an updated review must be completed by the Rockland County Highway Department. In addition, the applicant must comply with the conditions of their September twenty-six, two thousand nineteen letter. In addition, the applicant must comply with the conditions of their September 26, 2019 letter. So Rockland County did submit a revised review letter for this application. It's, don't have the date in front of me, I think it was January 5th. But we ask that the second half of that statement be overwritten. Because the items that are contained in the September 26 highway letter have already been addressed. Some of them are not material to the current application. And it's, it's superseded by their more recent letter, which only contains one comment, which is to get a road opening permit. So we just request that the second half of that comment number two be overwritten.
What do you think, Jane? Any issues with that? No. Anybody have any issues? Rich, Rick?
I'm sorry, Bill, I stepped away for a second. I didn't hear the comment.
It just primarily, we have a, Rick, we have a letter superseding a prior letter. Prior letter asks for something, which was done, recent letter said everything was all right. They only ask for one condition. So we just don't want to get, when we get the map signed, saying that we have to clear up something that's already been cleared up. So we're asking that second part of the sentence be overwritten.
Makes sense to me.
Sounds good. Okay, so we can override that one? I think that's all I had in terms of correspondence, Cheryl?
Yes, that's it.
All right, gentlemen, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mendel?
Name is Jim. Just clarification. This is Rockland County Seven, going back. Mr. Burney, you state three buildings. The plans show three buildings. The AAF and broker show two buildings. Well, the two buildings are connected by a roof. What do we have? Do we have three buildings or two buildings?
We have two buildings. And we have Tony Kowich, who is the project architect here, and he can explain the differentiation of that.
No, no, I understand. It's just that there's a contradiction between you got two buildings and the AAF does. The plans show three, it says three buildings on the plans. Shows buildings one, two, and three.
Okay, so it's really, it's two buildings under existing conditions? And then under proposed conditions, we are taking out a wall at the corner, the, the north or the south, east corner, and making kind of a breezeway? So the roof will remain? So essentially, it's becoming two separate buildings with the same foundation, existing foundation to remain.
All right. It's that they all, they all correspond to each other. That's all I'm asking. That everything is, okay? And the last thing was, on that same building there, this, this Rockland County again, it's the L-shaped building, but when you look at the plans, it shows tenant storage. The plan says five units. It says storage there. Can that be clarified?
Yeah, and that's a graphic error on the site plan on our part. I have to adjust the dashlines and indicate the different units and get them to correspond to the architectural floor plan, which shows five units on the, the southern portion of the L shape. And there is a separate tenant storage in that corner that's accessible for all the tenants. It's not attached to an individual apartment. That was the county's question.
Okay, and that'll be corrected. Okay, that's all I have.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Mr. McCrory?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. No comments at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews?
I have nothing, no comments right now. Everything was discussed that I had. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, sir. No comments on the project. It's very nice, but I think we should comment and thank Mr. Murphy for all his decades of work on behalf of veterans. I've worked with him on a project or two, and I see he still continues to do it. It's a great project, and I hope you're proud of yourself. We're all proud of you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Well said. Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I'll, I'll make a motion for final, so.
Can all projects go to CZ, Mr. Murphy? Especially this evening?
Well, I've been, let me just say something. I've been associated with town government for 50 years. I'm 86 years old. 50 of them have been spent in or with and around the government. And I can unequivocally reply that it's an extraordinary group of dedicated civil servants who want only the best for our town. And I believe sincerely that Orange Town is the very best town in America.
Thank you, sir. We still have the public to speak. I'll open this up to the public. If you have any comments regarding this project, please state them now. Would anybody like to speak regarding this project?
I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mendel Second, all in favor? All right. Of course, the easiest projects are the ones that go last. Mr. Bond, would you like to make a motion for final?
Yes, I will make a motion for final.
Lead Agency.
Make a motion for lead agency. Okay, go ahead.
Bond, lead agency, Mendel Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Mr. Bond, Negdeck?
So reaffirming.
Reaffirming Neg, Neg declaration. Mr. Mendel Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion for final.
Mr. Bond?
Can we put the override in with the final? How do, how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, we'll put that with the final, right? When we, when we read the letter, we'll do it.
Okay. Good. I have Ms. Slavin's letter of January 11th with two comments. First letter on January 12th with eight comments. I have two letters from Mazur. One on January 6th. I guess superseded by the, the letter on January 11th. Broker Engineering narrative. Rockland County Sewer Department on September 13th of 2019 with two comments. And the Rockland County Planning Letter on January 4th of 2020 with 10 comments. Comment number two.
I'll make a motion to override the second half of number two, right?
Second half, the applicant must comply with the conditions of their September 28th, 2019 letter. So that will be overwritten. Recommended by Mr. Bond. Can I get a second?
Andrew Seconds.
Andrew Seconds, all in favor of the override? I think that's all I have, Cheryl?
This is Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I guess the justification is that it's already been complied with. For the override, you just have to provide some justification.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, because it's already been overwritten, yeah, by the highway department letter. Excuse me. Cheryl said that's it for the correspondence. Can I get a second on the final?
Second.
Mendel Seconds, all in favor? We finished.
Long night, gentlemen. Let everybody be healthy and safe.
Thank you very much.
Good night, John.
Good night. Taking over.
Thank God to all of you. God bless you, and may you stay healthy, and may you not succumb to the pandemic.
You too, Mr. Murphy. Stay healthy.
Yes. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Cheryl. Yes, we have meeting minutes?
What happened?
We still have Mendel, Andrews, McCrory, Bond and Dell. Yeah, we're, we're just gonna approve meeting minutes and wrap up the meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Motion to approve, oh, Mr. Dell has something.
Yes, and Mr. Dell?
Thank you. I found something in this gray one, number 15, the last item. We said the evergreens hedge would be continued in a southerly direction to the extreme southerly portion of the lot line. That wasn't clear. And also, we didn't say low level, we just said evergreens. Cheryl?
Cheryl, you're muted.
Do you want to send that to me in an email, exactly what you want to write?
Sure, I think it's what we said at the meeting. That was all, just didn't come out, was not quite clear, it seemed to me in the. Mr. Mendel and I spoke about it briefly, and neither of us, unfortunately, were able to get it into you in time. But I'll send it in. That's all it's saying, is just extend that evergreen screening in a southerly direction to the southerly, southerly property line.
All right, that sounds good.
Pretty simple.
Okay.
All right, I'll just send that in.
Also, what do you got, Michael?
Sorry to extend this. I worked at 24, came right here, and even have dinner yet. I don't like to extend this too much. But I believe there was an issue with the Rockley, Borough of Rockley. We never got their letter. I think I sent an email regarding that, about the Edmund Lane development. We were gonna address that. I don't know if anybody cares to, if we have to.
There was discussion about that. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Rockley came late to the table on that one.
Rick, Rick was about to speak, so I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rick.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't know that there's really anything that we can do. I mean, there was an official vote. I don't know that we can really open up that again, even if we wanted to. For example, if it was the applicant's wrongdoing that led to that, we could open it up because it was the applicant's wrongdoing, but the applicant had nothing to do with this. For whatever reason, Rockley didn't send it out, send it to the wrong address, or the post office misdelivered it. So it's just one of those unfortunate things. It would have been good to have it. Perhaps it may have affected some votes, perhaps not. But frankly, as a legal matter, I don't know what we could do. If you wanted to reopen it, I don't think we could. I think the applicant could object to that, and they would be right. There was a final vote.
We'd have to have another meeting.
Well, I mean, I guess we can talk about it. I mean, Mr. McCrory, were you proposing to put the matter on again, or?
No, I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because it was, we got an email and I responded to it, I didn't hear back, so I just wanted to hear, you know, just get some feedback on, on the thought. But you, you cleared it up for me, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay. Anything else? Joe, we have meetings from December, minutes from December 9? Do you have any issues?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
I, this is the beginning of my 16th year, and I've never experienced anything like that. I.
This is 20, 25 for me. This is one of the worst, right?
I gotta say, though, guys, I gotta say, I've seen a lot worse. Some of these meetings have been hacked with stuff that did not have been seen by the public. So the unfortunate thing is, is I, you know, I was able to, and I know Matt Lenhan IT is on this call. We can only do so much to keep a person out of an online meeting like this. We can't lock the meeting, because then that doesn't let anybody else back in, and it is a public meeting. So I actually do think, you know, the chairman really tried his best to deal with the gentleman that was being so rude and disrespectful. And interestingly enough, he came in and started, I think, interrupting during the subdivision. But he was actually, he's the neighbor to St. Aden's. So I don't even know if he knew, if he understood what he was doing at all. And it's unfortunate, but I can't just lock people out. You know, if I could, then I could have, but.
Is there, is there some kind of question we could take?
Time out, time out, time out. Mr. Sullivan just rejoined again, so.
Yes. How you doing, sir?
We're signing off, Mr. Sullivan.
People that are in here, I just wanted to talk.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
I couldn't recommend a better. I'll sing, Mr. Mendel. All in favor? Thank you very much.
All these months, so hang.